Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for August 19th, 2020. I just want to make a note that Don Beeler will be joining us remotely this evening. Everyone, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion for the approval of the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
A second? All those in favor? Questions and comments from interested citizens? I believe we have one person that's physically in person, Ms. Lorraine Loaning. I just want to make a note again, as we did in the previous meeting, that the podium is over here to my left, and it will be cleansed after you're done speaking. And if you can just keep to social distancing as you're coming and going, please.
My name is Lorraine Loaning. I'm a district resident. Tonight, I'm going to be super brief. I want to talk about the agenda, and all agendas, not any in particular one. In a nod to transparency and a win for open government, I would like it if all documents that are available to the public through Freedom of Information be attached to the agendas that we can see prior to the meeting. Other boards that I monitor do this routinely, and they just stamp "draft" on it. By not having access to these documents, things like contracts and other stuff, it's very hard for the public to comment before they are voted on. Agendas are usually posted a day or two before the meeting, so if someone did want to request those documents, sometimes the turnaround might not work for commenting before the meeting. So I was just wondering if that is something that could be worked on, and maybe we could do it routinely. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a comment that was sent in, so Ms. Vitucci, the district clerk, will go ahead and read that one now.
Sure. I have one public comment from Ms. Jolaine Frias. Thank you for your efforts in bringing our children back to school safely. I have two questions. Will there be a separate isolation room in the nurse's office so that children who need to see the nurse don't come in contact with anyone showing COVID-related symptoms? And the second question is, what will be the grading policy for the first semester school year? Or school year?
And just to make a note, we'll be answering those questions throughout today's presentation.
Mrs. Rodriguez, is there an update on the questions and comments that were raised at the previous meeting?
Yes. I just want to make one note. I know that I've taken off my mask, but in front of me is what we call a sneeze guard, which would allow me to not wear a mask. I also want to make it noted that we are sitting up here, it may not appear to the audience or the people that are watching us on camera, that we are six feet of social distancing. The district policy is that we do both, that we wear a mask and be six feet apart, but in a case when you have a sneeze guard, then you can remove the mask. So I am going to do that for the purpose of today's presentation. It's very difficult to speak as much as I will and wear a mask just for this purpose, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood why I am taking off my mask. The last speaker that we had was a group from the Hudson Valley Change Coalition, and their concern was, number one, that I had not reached out to them to talk to them about some of the things that the district is going to do as far as social justice. And so I want to go back to late May, early June, when I did a video in response to what was going on in the country. And I think I was pretty clear in saying that, at that time, we had not made any decisions about how we were going to address a systemic problem. But I want to keep people in, I want to remind our audience and people who are listening that systemic change doesn't happen with one event, right? So systemic change is something that happens when we look at an organization and we try to understand what things we're lacking in and how we, as a school district, can do better, and what areas we need to focus on. So one of the things that we did was, the task force that was solely focused on SCL this summer really took a look at, you know, the traumatic events that our students and our families faced, as well as the social injustice. And what they did was, the committee looked at various organizations, and we decided that we were going to partner with Eye Opening Enterprises. And we have, Dr. Pickens is a clinical psychologist who is the leader of that organization. It is a black-owned company, and so we feel that after speaking with them and meeting with them, that they're really the right group to work with us. They're going to work on two things. The first thing they're going to work on is traumatic-informed classrooms, looking at our students. How do we bring back our students and staff after having gone through what amounts to a traumatic event? And also taking a look at the issue of social equity and racial equity. And one of the things I mentioned before is that they're going to be working with me, doing what we call equity audits, taking a look at the things that we do in this district and how we can improve to ensure that all of our students are equally represented throughout the district. The other thing that, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, is that they're going to be doing a presentation tomorrow. They're not only going to work with us, but they're going to work with other people throughout the district. And so in response to that, that is our plan, to work hand in hand with Eye Opening Enterprise and Dr. Pickens.
Thank you. I just want to comment on that as well, because as Mrs. Rodriguez had stated, we, as a board, have been on board with this as well since the spring events and everything. And we will actually be utilizing Dr. Pickens for our board retreat, which we will have on Saturday, September 12th. So we will have a board retreat from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. here at the high school. Some of the first hour will be our board norms, board goals, et cetera, and then Dr. Pickens will join us virtually, and he will be giving us an overview of the Bridge program, overview on the equity audit, creating an equity task force, and we will do an implicit bias exercise with the board members and the entire cabinet. So I think it's important that we've been discussing this since the onset, and it's coming from the Board of Education all the way down. So we're looking forward to that event on September 12th. And I think we'll have more information for his stuff, I think it's on the SCL page on Inspire.
Yes, and when I do the presentation, there's a piece where I talk about the event that we have tomorrow, the event for our parents.
Yeah, so there'll be information on the Inspire section of our website for anybody who wants to go there and read about the program. Next is the presentation of the final 2020-2021 reopening plan. Mrs. Rodriguez and the cabinet are going to give us their...
An update.
Update.
This is our fourth presentation, and so I just want to, I'm going to shorten it, because I've done this several times, and I really want to hone in on some key information that people had been, parents had been asking for. So I would just want to take everyone back. We, at the end of June, the beginning of July, we began to take a look at reopening. We started with a core team that included the board members as well as the cabinet members, and then we expanded it to have task forces. And so that number went up to 90 people. We did multiple things. We had surveys. We asked surveys for our staff, survey for our parents, survey for our students. And what we did was, we gathered a lot of information, and from that information, we were able to come up with what we call our three priorities. The first priorities are safety and well-being of our students, staff, and families. And I want to talk a little, I want to go off the script on this line, because I do want to mention that on Friday, I did respond to a Facebook post, which I never do. And I did because there were comments that were misinformation, and I also felt that it made comments about the district's priorities, which is the safety of our students. So I want to make something really clear. We will continue to have SROs in our district for the safety and security of our students and staff. And what I mean by that is that our SROs are specifically trained to be resources in our buildings. And throughout the past year, they have been nothing but a great resource to our families and our students. And so I want to take a moment to thank our SROs, both on the Monroe side and on the Woodbury side. They have been amazing, and they've been wonderful to have and wonderful to work with, and they have been a good resources for not only our students, but our parents. So I just want to reaffirm our commitment to our SROs. Now, SROs are a group of police officers who are trained, and they can come from the Woodbury side, and they can come from the Monroe side. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that our commitment has not changed to, you know, in regards to our SROs. So I go back to, that was one of our priorities, which is the safety and well-being of our students. And so that was really influential in developing this plan. The second is the social-emotional support for our students, staff, and families, and I talked a little bit about this before. When, this past year, we not only had a global pandemic, but we also had an economic downturn. Many of our families are really struggling economically, and then to make matters worse, we had social unrest. And so we know that when we reopen schools come September, we're going to be bringing people back who have been through a very difficult time. So again, the connection and the partnership with Eye Opening Enterprise is going to be very helpful as we reengage people back into the district. And then the last piece is robust instruction. And there's two types of instructions. We're going to have online instruction, and we're going to have in-person instruction. And both of those instructions have to be robust. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that throughout this year, there's a potential that we will have to go to totally everyone fully remote. I don't want people to think that that may not happen. That may happen. I think one of the things that I emphasize is that we need to be flexible, we need to be able to pivot quickly, meaning that if we go from in-person to at-home, we need to be able to do this seamlessly. And we need to do this seamlessly because our students depend on us. Instruction is so important for our students, so no matter whether you're in-person or you're at home getting a synchronous lesson, the lesson has to be good. So we will be working on that. And then we talked about the fully remote. You know, our parents and guardians were given up until August 14th to make a decision. I should share with the community that right now, approximately 25% of our students will be remote. And then we have what we call the hybrid, which offers both traditional in-classroom learning and synchronous remote learning. Our teachers will be returning on September 1st. I think it was two meetings ago, we changed our calendar for the year. So we're going to have September 1st, September 2nd, September 3rd, and September 4th will be in-service days, professional in-service day for our teachers, and really to provide them with professional development. Again, we'll have Dr. Pickens, who will be doing some work with our staff on Thursday and Friday. Another piece that's going to be important for us is our connectivity. We have to make sure that we can connect with our students virtually. And then the last one is our health and safety protocols, because there's going to be quite a number of health and safety protocols that we are all going to have to learn and make sure that we follow in this, what I call the new normal. And at this point, all of our instructional staff is going to be in the buildings five days a week. So one of the things that we decided was that we would divide the students into what we call AB groups, and they're based on households. So students will attend school on alternating days, A-B, to minimize number of people in the building. Second, members of the same household will attend school on the same day. And then we took it one step further, is that students will be part of the phase-in. We will have 25% of our students the last two weeks of September, and I will show you that on a schedule, but it will be considered A1, A2, B1, and B2. And if you take a look on the screen, you can see that on September 1st, our teachers will be returning to school, and they'll be doing all of their professional development training. And then Monday, September 7th, is a holiday. So our first day that our students will be in school will be remote, and it will be synchronous, and it'll be on September 8th. We're going to do that for two weeks. Again, taking a look at everything that we're doing to make sure that we are on target to bring in our students in our building. And then the 21st, we have, I'm sorry, then the 14th, we have what I call synchronous Mondays. We will always have synchronous Mondays, and Dr. Hassler will talk about what that schedule looks like. But synchronous Monday is going to be important, even when we're in the hybrid, because we have to make sure that our students know how to log on, take a class online. And then we go into the week of September 21st. Again, that Monday is a synchronous Monday. And then we start with A1, B1, A2, B2. Just to make sure, so people understand the number of students, I asked Mr. Masano yesterday approximately, how many students will be coming to the building on September 22nd? It's around 265 students. So again, we're phasing students into the building, we're making sure that they know what the protocols are, we're making sure if there's any issue that we're ready to change and be responsive to any issues that come up. For that week, students will go to school one day, and then they'll be asynchronous for the rest of that week. Now you go into the week of the 28th, which is a holiday, and we go back to the same thing, A1 and B1. Fully remote learning will start for the first two weeks, so if you're a student who has chosen to be fully remote, you too will be very similar as the rest of your classmates. And a reminder again that Mondays are always synchronous remote learning. And live streaming will begin in-person on October 19th. Again, we are phasing everything in if we can and do it, and be able to do this earlier, we will. But I'd like to give us time to be able to look at how things are working, to make sure that we have addressed any issues, to find out if there are students who are having technology issues at home with their own Chromebooks. And then we go to beginning Tuesday, October 6th. Is there a difference up there? Okay. Sorry, I saw you looking up there, and I thought maybe there was an issue. Then beginning on Tuesday, October 6th, we'll have the entire A group, so they will be coming to school. The B group will be synchronous. Again, they won't be, they won't have access to live synchronous until the week of October 19th, and then student groups will alternate by day. Hybrid schedule continues until the state dictates or things change. And I wanted to just show you a calendar of that, right? So you see A-B, A-B, and then the week of the 19th is where we're going to be looking at, hopefully getting in live instruction. So if you are a student who's at home, and you're a B student, and on an A day, you may want to log in to see your teacher live. Again, we're hoping to do that sooner, but I'd like to make sure, I don't want to make any promises that we can't keep, so the goal is to have that up and running by October And then I'm going to have Dr. Hassler take a look at, he's going to share some sample student schedule. And just to be sure, I actually had this remote in a plastic, so I'm going to hand this over to you.
You can hold on to that, because I only have a couple of slides. I'll use that for my...
Okay. So do you want me to do that for you? Okay.
There's only a couple.
Okay, so I'm going to just, you tell me.
And actually, can you back up to the previous slide, just to clarify very quickly? Even though Mrs. Rodriguez said that the October 19th is going to be the beginning of streaming of the in-person classes, the remote synchronous Mondays, where students are not physically present at all in school...
Always live.
...will be streamed...
Live.
Correct. It's the October 19th streaming of the in-person classes that will start.
Thank you for making that point.
No problem. Okay, you can...
So now can I click for you?
Yes, you can. Please. You can go one more. So as Mrs. Rodriguez said at the beginning, to demonstrate how quickly this is evolving and how fluid the situation is, initially, we shared with the community that we wanted to have all of our students who were going to be remote on those synchronous Mondays in the first two weeks of the school year, for example. We initially planned on having all students on a 9:00 to 2:00 schedule. And as we began to dig into the schedules and look at a number of different scenarios and really start to play out what the students' day were going to look like, we realized that it would probably be better for us to slightly stagger the start times of some of the levels, which allowed us to do a number of different things. Number one, it meant that not every single student in the school district was going to have to log on simultaneously at 9 o'clock. You know, if you're a family with multiple children in the household, depending upon what your situation is when the child is remote, getting all of the kids up and running at the same exact time might be challenging. In addition, we have quite a bit of shared staff across multiple buildings, and having everybody on the same schedule made it problematic for teachers having to log in simultaneously if they were teaching, if they were scheduled to teach at the same time in different buildings, because normally our start times of the buildings are staggered. It also allowed us to be able to give larger chunks of time for the staff to meet as departments or grade levels and have team meetings and professional development. So what we put together is a series of sample schedules at the elementary level to kind of go through what a typical day would look like, a typical remote day would look like for our K1 students. That's the first slide that's up. So as I said, we initially were looking at a 9:00 to 2:00 start date, but we decided that we were going to move our K1 students back slightly and have an 8:30 start time for them, which is very close to their typical school start time, which is around approximately 8:15. On the chart that I'm showing, there are categories that are light purple and dark purple. The light purple categories are whole group instruction, where the entire class would be logged in, and the teacher would be live on the computer with all of the students. And the darker purple boxes are either times when the students are working independently, off-screen, or the teacher is doing small group sessions or individual sessions with students, and those are not whole group activities. So in this particular case, and again, this is a sample, in this particular case, the K1 students would log on at 8:30 in the morning, and the teacher would have their morning meeting, and they would do morning meeting, they would look, they would do calendar work, they would maybe do some social-emotional activities with the students. In the beginning, it would be getting-to-know-you activities. After approximately 15 minutes, the teacher then would move into, or continue with the whole group instruction. And in this case, the teacher would start with an ELA block. There would be about 15 minutes or so of word study or phonics, and there would be a reading mini lesson. So that initial time period would be approximately 30 to 40 minutes of whole group instruction where the students would log on together. After that time period, there would be a block of time where the students would work independently on a number of different things. They would do either small group guided reading work, or they would read independently on their own. The teacher would have the ability to be able to conference with their, with individual students if necessary. So the students would do that outside of the whole group. There would be a 10-minute break, and then the teacher could then, after that break, continue with, again, another large group session where the students would have either a read aloud or a writing mini lesson, and then they would again break off into that small group independent work or individual conferencing with the teacher. That would get them through till about 10:15. The students would have specials. In this case, it would be from 10:15 to 10:45. The specials are going to be, once again, the typical rotation of art, music, physical education, health, library. After that, the specials would be for 30 minutes. After the specials, there would be a 30-minute lunch break. Following the lunch break, the students would return to a whole group session at about 11:15. Again, the teacher, in this case, it would be a math block. The teacher might start with a mini lesson with the group of students. Again, they would break off into small group or independent work, where they would be either individual or small groups meeting with the classroom teacher. There would be another break built into the afternoon. The next half an hour, from 12:30 to 1:00, would be content area instruction, which might be either science or social studies. And then at the end of the day, from 1:00 to 1:30, there would be a check-in time where, again, the teacher would return to either small group sessions or individual sessions with students. So the day would basically be broken down into a series of large group, small group, or independent blocks where the kids are working on their own. There would be breaks broken in the morning and in the afternoon. They would have a 30-minute special and a 30-minute lunch. Again, this is a sample, because, you know, as the buildings operate on a normal schedule, the students have staggered times where they have their specials, and the special teachers rotate from class to class. That would be the case also remotely. So this may fluctuate depending upon, for example, the students may come in for morning, you know, they may have their Google Meet with morning meeting, and they might start special at 9 o'clock in the morning. So the teacher may choose to do their ELA block after special. This is just a sample of what the day would potentially look like.
Should we go to the next one?
Yep. The next sample schedule that we put together is what a sample day would look like at the grade 2 through 5 level. Again, very, very similar to what the day at the K1 level might look like. However, the 2 through 5 start time is going to be 9 o'clock until 2 o'clock. However, the breakdown would be very similar. Students would have a 30-minute special, depending upon the time of the day when that's going to be scheduled, based upon the special schedule that the buildings put together. They'll also have a 30-minute lunch break. And again, the teacher would design the staggered whole group sessions, small group sessions, and independent work sessions throughout the day. So it's not like the students will have, you know, one of the concerns is the stamina of kids and the amount of time that they will be spending behind the screen. Even though the school day is 9 to 2, it is not a full 9 to 2 day in front of the computer screen. It would be a blending of whole group, small group, and off-screen independent work that the students would follow. At the middle level, and I should also note that that schedule, those two schedules that I shared with you, that's what the schedule will look like on all remote Mondays, as well as the first two weeks of the school year at the K1 and the 2-5 level. The next slide that we have up is what a day would look like for our middle school students. Synchronous Mondays will look slightly different than Tuesdays through Thursdays, where Mondays in a fully remote schedule, as well as the synchronous Mondays, will be an abbreviated day, where the school day starts at 9:30, it ends at 2:30, and they would basically be following a nine-period schedule. The periods would be abbreviated down to about 26 minutes. The teachers have the ability to see all of their students, and the students have the ability to be able to see all of their teachers on this particular schedule. The purpose of this abbreviated day is for the teacher to kind of establish what the week will look like with their students. And the students would progress. There's a gap time in between each period, a transition time, to allow students to either take a break, use the restroom. The teachers will be, as Mrs. Rodriguez indicated, the teachers are going to be in the buildings for the, you know, during those first two weeks and on the remote Mondays. So the teachers will also, at the middle school level and at the high school level, at times have to be moving from classroom to classroom and relogging into different computers, because they will be following their building schedule as well. So this schedule is not on an A-day, B-day schedule. Every student will follow their 1 through 9 schedule, even if they're hybrid or remote, they will go through this schedule. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, students at the middle school will follow an advisory and period 1 through 4 schedule, so their day will begin with advisory, starting at 9:30. Advisory will go from 9:30 till 9:47. At the end of advisory, they will begin period 1, they will progress through period 4. At the end of the day, there will be a check-in period, and because the students will have the first half of their day on Tuesdays and Thursdays and the second half of their day on Wednesdays and Fridays, periods 5 through 9, the check-in period gives an opportunity for the period 5 through 9 students that do not see those teachers on that day to be able to check in with their classroom teacher. So if a teacher gives an assignment, and the students aren't scheduled, you know, if they have math period 5 and they don't see their math teacher on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they will be able to check in and have a face-to-face discussion with their teacher during that check-in period at the end of the day. And the day will conclude with approximately 35 minutes of asynchronous independent work that the students will be doing. The reverse will be happening on Wednesdays and Fridays, where the second half of their day, the students will go through their schedules. Again, the day will begin with an advisory period. The students will then move from advisory to period 5, and then progress for the remaining, you know, periods that they would typically have, periods 5 through 9. And again, on Wednesdays and Fridays, there's that check-in period where the students who, if you have social studies period 1, and it's a Wednesday or Friday, and you don't see your social studies that day, during that check-in time, you have the ability to be able to check in with your social studies teacher to ask any questions or get, you know, any clarification on things that you might need. The next schedule that we have up is similar to the middle school schedule, except the times are slightly different. The middle school fully remote day will be a 9 to 2 day. Again, same... Again, same as the middle school on Mondays, and that's, any Mondays that are remote, as well as the synchronous Mondays. The students are going to follow an abbreviated schedule. They'll have all nine periods, 1 through 9. Every single student will follow this schedule. There's no rotation or A or B or anything like that. Students will follow their building-assigned period 1 through 9 schedule. The periods will be 26 minutes, very, very similar to the middle school, except the start time will be different. The high school fully remote days will be from 9 to 2. And again, similar to the middle school, the students will follow periods 1 through 4 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. There is no advisory at the high school, so students will begin right at the start of the day at 9 o'clock, period 1. They'll go through periods 1 through 4. Again, similar to the middle school, they will have a check-in period. If it's a 1 through 4 day, the 5 through 9 periods, students will be able to check in with their teachers during that time period. They'll have that asynchronous time at the end of the day. And again, Wednesdays and Fridays will be periods 5 through 9. And again, the check-in period at the end of the day for the period 1 through 4 students. Just to make sure that, because we've talked a lot about the differences between these remote situations. These schedules that I'm sharing with you right now are the schedules that would be in place for the first two weeks of the school year, as well as the Mondays that were indicated at the middle school and the high school. At the elementary level, Mondays have the same schedule as the other days would. Hybrid students are going to follow their traditional building schedule. We've gotten a lot of questions about what schedule will students follow if my child is hybrid on the A-B model that Mrs. Rodriguez mentioned earlier. The regular building hours are going to be in place for hybrid students. High school, they come into school 7 o'clock in the morning, they go until 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So, that is the same schedule that will be throughout. I've also been asked, what are the hours of students who, at the secondary level, who are remote-only option students, the families who've opted to have their children educated remotely? Those students are going to also follow their high school schedule. They will either be, they will either be in remote-only classes, or they're going to be remote-only students in hybrid classes, and they're going to have to follow their regular nine-period schedule the way that they, again, have been scheduled as in the past.
Thank you. I think this is a lot of information, especially when you start talking about schedules and what student's schedules will be like. How are we going to make sure that everybody gets this?
So, what we're going to do is, we wanted to sort of present this information to the community. We are going to compile all this information. Sample schedules are going to be posted on the district website. We're also going to, you know, if you go to the Inspire page, there's going to be links on there. There's a section that says "Schedules." We're going to compile all this information, and we're going to put it there so people can get that information.
I have a couple.
Yep. Mrs. Donahue, I'll get to you in one second.
And then I have some.
And Mrs. Talber also. The sample schedules that I showed you at the elementary level, your individual child's schedule will be shared with you at the elementary level by your child's teacher. They'll let you know, especially during those full two weeks when we're starting remotely, when your special is, when the lunch is, and what those other staggered whole group and small group times will be. The middle school will be sending out what your period 1 through 9 schedule will be, as well as the high school. So, that will be communicated by the building. Mrs. Donahue.
Okay. My question is in parts.
Sure.
And the parts depend on your answer to the first one.
Okay.
In the middle school and the high school, will the students be changing rooms?
Yes, the students will be changing the rooms.
Okay, then the second part is, how are the rooms being cleaned between?
Okay.
I think that's part of the presentation.
Yeah.
When we get to health and safety.
Okay, no problem. We're going to get to that.
We have, at the end of this presentation, I have about 20 questions that we're going to be answering, and I think that's one of them. So, we'll answer that question.
No problem.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the high school being that that's there, and I'll work backwards.
Okay.
So, the high school questions that I have are, what are we doing about A, B, C, D, E, F days?
So, as of right now, the plan is that the days are going to rotate by week. So, if it's an A-day at the high school, now, not A-day for hybrid students, it's an A-day, A, B, C, D, E, F. It'll be an A-day for the week, then the following week will be a B-day, then the following week will be a C-day, to make sure that every student has the ability to be able to access that part of their schedule. So, that way, it doesn't fall on, you know, an A-day or a B-day or a C-day, doesn't fall on the day the kids are not physically present in school in the hybrid model. Does that make sense, the way that I'm saying it?
Yes.
Okay.
And the difference between the Tuesday, Thursday, and the Wednesday, Friday? I see asynchronous on Tuesday, Thursday, and not on Wednesday, Friday?
Sure. The reason is, is because the, we have a nine-period day. There are four periods during, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, five actual instructional periods, plus the check-in on Wednesdays and Fridays. That's the reason why the asynchronous is on Tuesdays and Thursdays, not on Wednesdays. It's going to be straight live instruction through on Wednesdays and Fridays because it's a five-period day. Does that make sense, the way that I'm saying it?
It does. Okay. And the middle school, what about the music before school?
As of right now, no. And the reason is, we're still, we've gotten a lot of questions about, you know, how we're doing the large ensembles. The ensembles that are scheduled during the school day, we're working out how those are going to look to make sure that we can accomplish some social distancing. We may have to move some of the locations. The before-school, as of right now, are not going to be happening. We're looking at possibly remote opportunities for those, so we're looking at a couple of different things. But as of right now, no.
Okay. And then with the elementary, the K-5, can you talk about specials? What happens for specialists during the remote world?
Sure. The students are going to have an instructional block. It'll be whole group, if you can go back to the elementary schedule. In this case, the sample schedule, the students will have special from 10:45 to 11:15. So, at 10:45, the students will log into Google, and there, our teacher will be there to do a live whole-group lesson with them. Now, we're going to be doing specials a little bit differently at the elementary level this year, where, and again, this is as of right now, this is where the plan is right now. The plan is to, because we have a, typically, when we were in school, we would have a rotation of specials. Monday would be music, Tuesday would be PE, Wednesday would be art. Because now we're having this rotation of As and Bs, what we've decided is, we're going to do specials in blocks, where students will have art for three weeks, because at the elementary level, we're in trimesters. Students will have art for three weeks, music for three weeks, physical education, library, health. So, that way, we make sure the same, kind of the same logic that we're using for the rotating of days at the highs, of the days by week at the middle school and the high school, same sort of idea, is so that way the kids get a full, you know, block of special, and they don't have the risk of not being in school on the day that a particular special is scheduled for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have one question. Oh, I'm sorry. Going back to the fully remote side of the plan, and I hate to even say this out loud, but if, God forbid, we end up being shut down by the governor.
Yep.
Will that then be the schedule that we will go back to, that we are following in those first 10 days?
Yes. The first two weeks, that's part, that's, I mean, there's many reasons for starting out remotely, that's one of them.
Okay.
That in the event that we get shut down, every single person will go through the same schedule that we've done for the first two weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And Mondays will always. Can you bring the middle school up again?
Mrs. Rodriguez has it.
I think he's having fun telling me to be his clicker.
Can I just ask about advisory?
Sure.
What's the plan for advisory?
So, advisory right now is...
Eric, you have to face forward and speak because nobody can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. The plan for advisory is the same as the plan has been in the past, where basically the students come in, advisory is going to be scheduled for kids, where right now, advisory is a group of students, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. Students have the same advisor for the same three years that they're going to be in the middle school. That same exact model will apply during the fully remote, the fully remote schedule. So, same, same plan.
So, what do they do for those 17 minutes in the fully remote model of advisory?
Same, it's what they would normally do during the school day. I think that they're also planning social-emotional activities during those time blocks.
That was basically my question.
Yep. There you go.
Doctor, I had a question about the hybrid model.
Yep.
So, I just want to make sure...
I apologize for my back.
Sorry?
Sorry for my back.
Oh, no.
I got a, yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand. So, when you are an A1 student, say, on the days when you're not going into school and you're, it's after the beginning of the first two weeks, but not yet October 19th, how are you going to be learning?
Okay. So, can you rotate back to the, please, Mrs. Rodriguez?
Sure. Where do you want me to go back to?
Keep going back to the A1, B1 schedule.
Oh, got it, got it. Yes, okay. That one?
Uh, no.
I think you're talking about the last two weeks. That schedule?
Yes. So, for the, you're talking about the week of September 20th and the week of September 27th, where we're A1, B1. So, the question is, that, those weeks, the students are going to be coming in once a week, either A1, B1, A2, B2. They'll also have an opportunity to be able to have the live sessions that we're speaking about on remote Mondays. That will also be live. So, the students will have their live instruction on whatever day they're A1, B1. They'll also have the classroom teacher live on Monday, who's going to kind of set the stage of what the week is going to be like. That will be, those weeks will still be asynchronous. The remote-only days will be asynchronous. We will not be streaming. They will be streaming on Mondays, but not on B1, A2, B2 days.
Right. And so, for the A1 student, on a B1, A2, and B2 day, they're going to have learning as they had in the springtime.
Asynchronously, correct.
Asynchronous, until we go back to the live, till we live-stream it.
Correct.
Until we're able to...
Which is not until October 19th.
October 19th. Now, part of the issue...
Possibly, yes.
Right, possibly earlier, depending on circumstances.
One of the reasons for that is that, Barghov can certainly hop in on this, A1 is the beginning of kids beginning to come into the building. We're going to have a lot of additional devices that are now going to be coming in because we're now going to be one-to-one. So, in addition to some of the remote-only sessions that are going to be still streaming, you're going to have all of the students that are going to be coming in with their Chromebooks. So, we're in, we're rolling in 25% of the kids at a time to make sure that we have the proper connectivity. We don't want to have every single class streaming across the entire school district, plus now all of the additional students who are coming in with their devices, and not being able to have the bandwidth to be able to broadcast all of that. So, we're kind of incrementally phasing that in. Does that make sense, the way that I'm explaining it?
It does.
Okay.
But to start with, for three days, a student is going to have to learn as they were learning in the spring, but probably even a little more advanced, because you're following the curriculum, and they're going to have to learn new things kind of independently.
Correct.
But for the first two weeks, they'll be synchronous, so the students will be, it will be live. So, from the 8th through the 18th, the students will be live.
Correct.
Every student.
Correct.
And just on the one-on-one Chromebook, has it been explained to the families that the students will be bringing the Chromebooks back and forth to school, and that they should, you know, look maybe to put them in a case, or put their name on them, or that it's something that's going to be expected of them when they're in school?
Yes, so we are finalizing what we call Device Handbook.
I can't hear you.
We will be finalizing what we deem as Device Handbook, and that is going out to the parents shortly. It's about 7 to 10-page document, and it's outlining expectations of all the students that they should be bringing the device while they are coming to the school, because we will not have our labs or any other devices. So, the reason for one-to-one process is eliminate all the other devices, and then have the kids safely using their own district-assigned device.
Okay. I also, I know that there was some confusion with the devices that were picked up, where if they had multiple children, they didn't know which device went to which child. Is that something that they can, is it an easy fix for that?
Yes, so... We are still working on that. We are going to use a product that we are working with our student management system. Ultimately, that will be published under Parent Portal. So, then, parent would know, if I have three kids, which device belonged to which kid. However, the devices are universal, so it doesn't really matter, but I think it's important for parents to know that the device A is for Johnny, device B is for Josephine.
I think this is for accountability for the family, right?
Well, it's accountability, and also, we have, when you're a senior, you have to turn it in.
Correct.
So, we have to know which device you're turning in, right? There is also a handbook that we are creating. Carol is working on it. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say about a handbook. And so, that handbook is going to have a lot of that information. We're compiling all of that information now, and eventually, we'll have it printed for our families. Somebody else had a question?
Mrs. Carol.
Okay, hi. Okay, so, how about any student that requires extra help?
So, the, we haven't exactly worked out how extra help will look. We're still going to offer it. And the reason why I say that is, we, as of right now, we're not going to be running the after-school buses, because we need to know specifically who's going to be riding the transportation. So, normally, if you're a middle school student, and you decide that you're going to stay after school for extra help with your teacher, your teacher writes you a bus pass, and you can get on the bus freely. We need to be able to manage how many kids are actually getting on the school bus, so we can't just have it open for kids to be able to stay after school freely to get a bus pass from their teacher. So, we're looking at how that is going to take place remotely. We haven't found a solution just yet, only because kids have to take the bus home. So, if a student is going to be doing extra help after school, and they're a middle school student, and the middle school ends at 3 o'clock, they may not be walking in the door until 3:45. So, we haven't fully ironed out exactly how that is going to look just yet, but we plan on offering extra help. Somebody sent a question, will students, will students have access to AIS services and things like that? All of those services will continue to be in place. At the secondary level, AIS support is built right into their schedule, periods 1 through 9, depending upon the classes that they take. At the elementary level, we're planning on offering AIS, ENL support to students during those small group times that I was referencing. So, the teacher may do a 10-to-15-minute mini lesson with the students whole group, and then the students will break off to do independent work in small group. The teacher will be able to check in with small groups of kids, but we can also have AIS providers to be available during that time block to also work with small groups of kids, ENL as well, and things like that.
Eric, is it, oh, you're still there. We are having four days for 12-11, 8-11?
Yes.
Yes, we announced that yesterday.
Yep.
And will they start?
They start, they will start their regular schedule in, what am I looking at, September 22nd?
Right.
September 22nd, when we begin our A1 and B1, they'll come in for the four days.
They will. Okay, so, 15-11 will be doing the two days on...
We have not, we have not decided that yet.
As of right now, but we haven't finalized yet. We're still, some of that depends on class size and things like that, and we're still sifting through remote-only requests, so that's part of the reason why we haven't...
So, you're not sure if it may be more than the two days?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, fine. So, my next question would be, in the event a 15-11 student has a one-to-one monitor, and they're remote, how is the monitor going to assist and support a student remotely? Will they be part of the remote learning? Will they be able to reinforce what they're learning, or...
It really, one-to-one monitors are really there to walk, be with the students and work with the students, but teaching assistants work with students. So, I'm not really sure if a one-to-one monitor is assigned to a student who's remote, how will that one-to-one monitor work with the student? It really depends upon the student's IEP.
Correct. So, that's what I mean. If a student has a one-to-one monitor, clearly, it would only be because they have it in the IEP.
Right.
Correct.
So, that monitor would be with them for those five days. If you're only doing two days in and two days out, and the one, everyone is doing it from home-
Right.
How would that monitor, if it's in the Bible, because an IEP is basically-
Correct.
This legal document, it's like the Bible here. How would they be able to assist or support, depending on what their role is?
I think one of the, students have one-on-one monitors for different reasons, and one of them might be for physical needs. So we have students who have one-on-one monitors for toileting needs, for example. I don't know how that would happen on a remote-
No.
-environment, but if they're working remotely, I think if your question is, what happens to those one-on-one monitors, how do they support them? I think the response is, we, we have to determine what the needs are for each student, and how they would be able to-
And it'll truly be case by case, it will truly be case by case.
Clearly, physically, they'll be home, so they'll be taken care of. I'm talking about instilling, you know, reinforcing what they've learned, go over, modify things. Maybe they have some behavioral, maybe need some redirecting, and that would, they would be happening in school, still could be happening during a Zoom, or however you would do it remotely.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, wondering how that would work and what that would look like.
I, I think to your, to your, to your point, some of our students receive, receive ABA services, for example. So in the case of ABA, our teaching assistants are often the ones that provide that level of support to our kids. So it may be, in addition to, if the student's remote-only, in addition to the scheduled instructional time, they may have sessions with the teaching assistants specifically on ABA skills and things like that. So that would be, that would be scheduled and worked on remotely, in addition to.
I guess I'm thinking that if I have, if my child, who, thank God, graduated, had a one-to-one monitor, needed assistance, needed it remotely, that that monitor would be doing it on the days that they are, maybe that Monday, maybe they're connecting in between that, those days, to help with certain things with note-taking, because sometimes they need note-taking, they're not fast enough, things are now going to be remotely, that's difficult sometimes when you're just sitting in a classroom to take notes. So they may have that type of assistance. I guess I'm talking in that kind of-
Right.
Right, and I think it's, again, dependent upon the student's IEP. I think one of the things that everybody has to understand is that this is a really complex thing that we're doing. And so we are working almost like, I, I made the analogy of painting a picture, right? So as I'm painting the picture, I'm beginning to see clearly what this is going to look like. And I think that there's a lot of anxious people, whether it's a staff member or a parent, and we are taking our time, we're being deliberate about that. So sometimes when we don't give information, I just don't want anybody to think that we already know what we're doing, but we're just not saying it. Trust me, if I knew it, I would say it. But I think it's really important for people to understand that this is truly unprecedented, and that the work that's going in to develop a well-established plan is really complex. And so, little by little, we're putting things together, and, and if we don't answer something, it's because we really don't know, and it might be contingent on something else. You know, when we talk about special education, there's so many other variables, and so to be able to say what we did yesterday, which was send out the video and say, look, we know that our 8-11s and our 12-12s will be able to, we'll be able to bring them four days, was truly a lot of moving parts. And so we're looking at everything and really trying to be as deliberate as possible, to make sure that what we say can happen, but also to, to provide the support that our students need. Because we have 6,700 students, whether you're remote or you're in school, you're our child, and we have to make sure that we provide you with all your services, or whatever it is that you need. And this is by far, I've been in education for over 30 years, this is probably the most difficult thing I've ever been a part of.
And I think that your, your question on extra, extra help is, is a great example of that, where certainly this is something that we're looking to be able to continue, but the logistics of offering an in-person or an challenge because of, of transportation, and we also can't just say, the only way that you can stay for extra help is, we can't have you on the buses, your parents are going to have to drive you. Like, that's, that's-
And that becomes an equity issue, right?
Right, that's, that's unrealistic. So we want to make sure that we continue to offer it, but logistically, we haven't arrived at a place of how we can do that. I mean, another, you know, Emily brought up at the last Board of Ed meeting, extracurricular activities in clubs. We're still very much digging into what that's going to look like. What do we have the ability to be able to offer remotely? Part of the reason why we haven't really come out with a full explanation of everything is we, you know, we're-
Taking over.
We're still trying to figure it out.
Well, thanks for your honesty.
I want to comment, though, on that piece, because we, we watched the video yesterday, too, for the special education portion of it, and I just know that at the end of it, too, it was that for specific cases, and because it is so individualized, parents are encouraged to reach out to their building principal and/or the director. So I think if they have specific questions related to their child, it's hard to answer it vaguely on such a broad scale, because-
Yeah, it was broad, yes.
It is literally individual.
It really was, and we have, I think we have over 800 students, we have over 800 special ed students, so every, every, every IEP, obviously, is unique, individualized education program. So I just think that we're, we're getting there, you know, we're, we're, we're working through those questions. It's important to hear the questions, because we have to put pen to paper and then come up with a plan, but it is by far the most complex thing I've ever been a part of.
Eric, let me ask a question, if, for extra help, is there a way to look back and to see who had extra help in the past, to get like a historical point, where maybe you could say, you know, by noon, you could, you have to sign up for extra help, and only X amount of students are allowed? And once that quota gets filled, then we won't accept anyone. I know that's maybe bad, because some kids might need help, and they, then they won't get it, but-
Right.
If you kind of historically know, let's just say, 60 kids are in extra help, if you have three buses to accommodate those 60 kids, then you, you can cap it at, say, noon, and those kids have to go online, or whatever, into the system, log on and say, I'm staying for extra help.
Right.
There you would know how many kids were staying, and not be over the limit, or then, you know, last minute, the buses would be crowded. I mean, you can't-
They can't stay because they don't have a ride.
No, but they have a bus.
Right, well, the issue, the issue with, sure, yeah.
Can I just jump into that?
You're the boss.
See, and I, I'm glad that you said that out loud, because it's, it, it appears that way, but then here's the other-
Is he talking to your microphone, please?
That we have to be careful, is that if a group of students stay after school, and I have three activity buses, and all of the kids seem to be from the same area, I have a problem. Because I have to socially distance them on the bus, too. I think, I mean, I, I hear you, and I, and I, maybe we can work something out, but I think the first month is really going to tell us, A, who's coming to school, B, who's going to need help, and then what we need to do is really plan in advance, to know who is going to have to stay after school if we're going to run those activity buses. But it's really hard when students decide on the day that they're going to stay after school. So I think the month of September is a good month for us to talk to our teachers, and talk to our students, and talk to our parents, to figure out, you know, what students are going to stay after school.
Well, we could maybe, you could maybe run like a demo on, a kid could say, I would stay after school today, and set up, so you have an idea of the number of kids looking to stay home. I mean, you just do it as a test basis, hey, we're demoing this project, so if you think you would want to stay after school, sign up for it. And then you could get an idea of the children that maybe would do it, and then maybe you could roll it out and see if it gets out of hand or not. You might have to shut it down at some point, but it would be better than, you know, not offering it because we can't find a solution.
What about remotely?
Well, but again, we're, we're talking about offering it remotely, but the problem is, again, typically, extra help is immediately at the conclusion of the school day. If we offer it remotely, either the kids are going to be remote when they're physically in school, logging on right after the school day is over, or they have to get on the bus, and they're not going to get home until 45 minutes, so extra help won't have to, won't be able to start until after. But it also goes back to, this discussion also goes back to like the, the, some of the before-school classes that the middle school offer, similarly, a lot of the music ensembles and things like that, many of those students would take the high school bus when they came in. And so, again, that's also problematic, because we have, we're trying to operate from a finite group of kids that we know are going to be accessing district transportation. If you add into that additional kids who are going to be dropped off at the middle school before coming to the high school, that's another layer of, you know, making sure that we know exactly who's going to be on the buses at, at each individual time. So we're still very much drilling down to some of those nuances.
So that would be intramurals as well? I mean, I know we don't know the sports, but intramurals would be part of the-
Same, yep. Mrs. Donahue.
Yeah, I, I apologize if I'm digressing, but I'm trying to envision what my child's week would look like. Monday is, it's all on, it's all-
Remote.
Remote, okay. My child's Tuesday, Thursday. They come in Tuesday, Thursday. What happens to them on Wednesday and Friday? What are they doing?
So Wednesday and Friday through October 19th is going to be asynchronous, where the students are, again, Monday is going to be that remote-only day. They will be able to meet with their classroom teacher, the teacher will be able to, you know, give them an idea of what's going on for the week. There's also going to be some, some SCL activities that they're going to be doing with the kids and things like that. They'll be in school Tuesday or Thursday, so between the session on Monday, as well as their sessions on Tuesday and Thursday, the teacher will be sharing with them, and posting in Google Classroom, the work that the students will be doing on the off days. Starting on October 19th, we're planning on streaming, live-streaming the in-class, in-person sessions. So if I'm a B student, and I'm not in school on Tuesdays and Thursdays, on Tuesday, I can log into the Google Meet and, and stream and view what's happening within that classroom, to be able to stay up to speed on what's happening. Similarly, the teachers will still continue to be giving asynchronous assignments to kids, or they will be able to, you know, post videos and things like that in Google Classroom, so that even in the event on those off days that kids are not able to log in, they'll still have opportunities to be able to stay on top of their learning on those off days.
Okay, so if they're live-streaming, and my child misses, are those recorded, so that they could watch them at a later time, or?
We're, we're planning on doing that as well, recording them, so that way the kids have the ability to be able to watch. And again, because we know that there are so many different scenarios that families are facing on those off days, that students, for many reasons, may not be able to necessarily log in-
At that time.
Synchronously, right. We're, we're looking at as many different ways that we can make sure that they stay up to speed as much as possible.
Thank you, Doc.
No problem.
Last question.
Well, maybe.
As of, let's say this is working out-
I have two more presentations, remember.
Let's say this is perfect. So it's, it's, it's working out great, and it's November, and on a regular, like a Wednesday, where, let's say, your kid's not in school, he's remote, doesn't sign on, they're absent, like, how are we, like, because otherwise, you might have kids just not signing on and getting the work later on, so are they-
Correct.
The parents need to understand, if I understand this correctly, if your kid doesn't sign in at 9:00 for his 9:00 class, he's absent from their class, it's like cutting a class.
Daily attendance is required, however, it is not necessarily a requirement for them to have to log into those synchronous sessions, again, because there may be some instances where, if I'm in school Tuesday and Thursday, and I'm remote on Wednesday and Friday, there may be a, a whole array of different reasons why kids won't be able to log in during that time period. We are looking to offer other opportunities, again, for the kids to be able to get credit for that day, where, to Mrs., what Mrs. Donahue said, if the teacher posts a live recording of that lesson, the student may be able to log into Google Classroom later in the day and view the lesson that was posted by the teacher that took place earlier in the day. The student could submit an assignment, the student could do a post in Google Classroom, and still get credit for that day, even if they didn't necessarily log in live to that exact session. However, no matter what-
It just wants to be clear that I don't think this, that should be the premise of like everyday behavior, because-
Right.
You're, you're trying to get it so that on a Friday, the student is in Period 5 at 9:00 AM, he doesn't feel like waking up, or she-
Right.
She just says, I'll do it later.
Right.
It becomes a pattern, now you have, you know, I, I just think that it needs to be clear that at 9:00, you need to be in Period 5, whether you're in your home at your kitchen table, or whether you're in a hybrid, and you're home, you're in school. Period 5 is for 9:00, and that's really how you need to do it. And if you're not there, you're considered absent from school that day. I mean, I, I know that sounds harsh, but with what we're doing, but you, there has to be, the rules have to be set pretty early, and the kids need to understand that they're just not going to make up stuff all the time, or they want to wait three weeks and then do a project to get all the credit. That's not what this is, that's what it was, and no one liked it, when we closed in, in March, and we're trying to make it better. So we're trying to make it more like school. So I just think everyone needs to be clear, I'm sure the kids don't like me saying that, but they need to get up at 9:00 and log in and be in Period 5, no matter what. And if you don't, you're marked absent.
It's an accountability piece.
And how do you track that? So, so if they don't log in live, who's taking attendance when they do log in?
So, so we're, the classroom teacher is ultimately responsible for taking attendance, but in Google Classroom, there are a number of different ways that students can log their attendance.
Even after the fact of the live session?
Correct, and that's, and that's the issue, is that, I mean, we, we had this conversation on Monday, that, you know, the period-by-period attendance piece, where normally, when you're, when you're remote, if you're not in your Period 3 class, and you log in later in that day and view the lesson and submit assignment, there might not be until 4:00 in the afternoon that you might not officially get credit for that day, because you weren't able to participate earlier in the day.
So I was just going to say that the state, last year, had different guidelines. They have been very clear that we are required to take attendance-
Right.
And that school, whether it's remote or in person, has to be very similar to traditional school. So we are required to do all of those pieces, and that has, for us, an impact on state aid, right? So attendance is really critical for us, for our students, and parents need to know that as well. However, if a student is sick, we expect parents to let us know they're not in today because they weren't feeling well, or if they're remote, they're not going to be logging on to their class because they're sick. So there's still that piece of communication, we need to know why a student isn't logging on. I mean, that's the other reason why we have the first two weeks, because we need to make sure students are logging in and doing what they're supposed to do. If they don't, they will get a call from either a teacher, a guidance counselor, a building administrator, we want to know why you're not in school. And remote doesn't mean that you can do whatever you want. It means that you are going to have, especially on Mondays, you're going to have that synchronous Monday, you need to log in, and you need to be present.
I think, I think that's a piece that we spoke about quite a bit in the task force, and it kind of goes to what a bunch of people have said. So to Anthony's point about those first couple of hybrid days, that it's going to be asynchronous, and that if your child is not physically in the building, they're going to kind of be on their own, to an extent, yes, but to an extent, no, because there will be an accountability piece, that they will be expected to have an attendance and log into their assignments. Whereas in the spring, it was very much, my daughter's doing biology at 11:00 at night. So that part of it is, again, a little bit of an accountability piece. The other part of it is, as far as the extra help, which is what we've talked about, we don't, might not have a solution to that exact problem yet, but a piece of the SCL component, and the communication component, is if your child is sitting home and doesn't understand something, either the parent should be reaching out, and/or if you're, I'm going to have an eighth grader this year, so I'm, I'm confident that she could send an email to Dr. Hassler, I didn't understand this when I was home by myself remotely. So I think those are pieces that, to Mrs. Rodriguez's comments that we've made, is to be flexible. It's not going to be the, the typical extra help where she stayed after school and saw the teacher, but if she has a question, it should be able to be addressed. And I think as parents, that's one of the pieces that we're looking for, the accountability, the communication, the help if needed, the, the support system is there, and I think that's one of the biggest reasons for the SCL component and the synchronous Mondays.
Agreed, and that was, that's also, in, in the remote model that's up there, that's also a function of that check-in period, where, you know, in, not only, as somebody I mentioned earlier, not only is this going to be the first two weeks of the school year, but in the event that we get shut down for a prolonged period of time, this is what the schedule will be like at the middle school and at the high school level. The purpose of that check-in period is, even though we're going through periods 1 through 4, and students may not see their periods 5 through 9 teachers until the next day, they'll still have that check-in period at the end of the day to be able to connect with their teacher in the event that they have any questions or issues.
Right.
Dr. Hassler?
Yep.
I'm assuming that with this plan, students in the same household will no longer be sharing the same device, they'll each have their own?
Correct, yes. Yep.
I have one more.
Okay.
You may have spoke about it while I was trying to log in.
Okay.
I apologize in advance. I apologize in advance. On the days that we have remote, how are we getting lunch to the free and reduced students?
So, we haven't decided that yet. We do know that we have to provide lunch, and I think I see Aldis in the audience, but I'm not going to have him get up. Right, Aldis? But we've talked about this, we know that we have a responsibility to our free and reduced students to provide lunch. So one of the things that we are doing is, we're going to provide them a bag to go. So if I come in on Monday, I'm an A-Day student, and I'm free and reduced, and Tuesday is my asynchronous day, I get a bag to go.
Okay.
The only day that's really difficult is Monday, because students aren't in school from Friday on, right? So there's two days, you really can't give them something to have from Monday. So that's something that we're working on. But we will be providing them with a grab-and-go at the end of the day.
So, Dr. Hassler, I know you mentioned briefly grading is something that's still being looked at, but specifically, you know, speak for the high school level, you're also looking at possibly the redistribution of the waiting system with respect to, like, I know part of that is participation, that may look different in the remote world versus the, right? Homework, I mean, so all those things are being considered, and Mrs. Rodriguez's word of flexibility is definitely going to be a big part of that conversation.
Right, and I think it's sort of that blending, similar to what Mr. DiLorenzo was saying. You know, we want to make sure that we're still giving very clear parameters, but at the same time, making sure that we're accommodating for so many different scenarios.
Right.
So, yes, I mean, somebody, somebody asked me the other day, "What's the status of midterms and final exams?" I said, "Midterms?" I said, "That's in January, for crying out loud."
We're trying to get through September.
Right.
But it weighs into the, you know, it factors into the waiting system.
Right, but that, ultimately, this is something that we need to consider seriously now, because teachers are establishing what their grade books are at the beginning of the school year, and the waiting of their, of their F4
That's what I'm speaking about.
is dependent upon that, and, you know, I don't know that we're going to hear as to what the status is of Regents' exams, but for quite a few of our courses, the Regents' exam counts as the final exam, so, you know, yeah.
Okay.
I think.
That was a non-answer.
I can tell.
That was a good non-answer, that was good.
No, but, but there is a, so here's a piece that you should know, is that we are, when we talk about this, it's important that we have some sort of a traditional grading system.
Correct.
The grading system we had last year was not traditional, for lack of a better word. And I think that it was because everything just happened all at once, and we weren't prepared. But certainly, this coming year, there is an expectation that students, teachers will teach, students will learn, and we will grade, because that's important. Grading students is important in feedback. So, like, and I do believe also that we need to have flexibility. Let's not forget that we're in a global pandemic, meaning that people get sick, students' families get sick. So, you know, what we want to do is make sure that our students understand that there's flexibility. I love the fact that Stacy said, you know, she's going to have her eighth-grade daughter reach out to
Dr. Hassler.
to Dr. Hassler, but she's not. She's going to reach out to her teacher. I think one of the things that we can do at this time is help build, make our students more resilient, to be able to speak for themselves if something is not right. So all of those pieces, we're going to try to be as traditional with flexibility, being able to pivot at the last minute, I mean, this is.
And fair and equitable.
And fair and equitable.
We need to make sure that we establish.
We need a new word for all that.
I know, I'm going to think of a word.
We need to establish grading policies that are also consistent for students that, whose families have opted for them to be remote only, and for students who are physically present in school. So we need to make sure that all of that is equitable across the board on both sides.
It's circumstantial, and those are the, you know, the reasons for them choosing one model over the other has a lot to do with their situation.
Right, so, so all of those need to kind of factor into that determination.
And I hope everybody here realizes that, you know, I know that there's a lot, and for those of you that are sitting in the audience, like, these are a lot of questions, but these are, I mean, there's 7,000 people that are at home having these same questions. And yes, we've presented, and we've talked, and we've answered, but I think that for the purpose of this, this is why I'm asking these questions.
No, I think questions are good. As I said, at the end of this presentation, we have another 20 questions that we're going to be answering.
I think we've, at least one or two we've answered, I mean, we have at least across one or two of those off.
But, but it's important, right? It's, it's a, this is new, so I don't have little children, I mean, I have a grandson, but I worry, the same questions that you have, I have them myself, so this is all new. We have to be flexible, you know, come September, things may change, I'm not really sure. So we're planning two months at a time. I'm planning for September and October. Let's see how that goes, and then we plan for November and December, and that's, COVID taught us that, that we need to be ready to do whatever it takes. And I think that if there's any district that can do that, it's Monroe-Woodbury. So thank you, Eric, for doing this.
No problem.
Are you done?
I, I.
Oh, we do.
Okay, I'm going to move on, this is going to be quick. So I just want to, the last time we were here, I did have some pictures, and so I have more pictures. I think parents need to see what it looks like. Here's a classroom, on the left is a classroom, a high school classroom, a middle school classroom, a classroom at Pine Tree and Sapphire. As you can see, we are maintaining six feet of social distancing. When our students come in, they'll be asked to sit at a desk, they'll be asked to wear a mask, and to maintain social distancing. I think the biggest question that parents had for us, and I'm going to show you a picture in a minute, is what does a cafeteria look like? It looks really different. This is what a cafeteria will look like for us, and it's not something that I want to present, but I have to be transparent. It's tough for kids who usually go into a cafeteria and sit with six or seven friends. They are going to have to be socially distant. Remember that first priority, which is keep our kids safe. So I don't like this, I'll be very honest, but it's better than not having kids in the building. So, again, I think we have to teach our kids to be resilient. Maybe they'll bring a book into the cafeteria and read, or maybe, I know some kids are going to be asking their principal, maybe they can have their cell phones so they can text each other? I don't know. But anyway, it's, it's really important for us to show our parents what it really looks like. It's going to be different, but it's okay. I think that's the message that we have to send to our students. It's okay, because it keeps you safe, you get to have lunch, and you get a break.
What's the max capacity in the cafeteria?
It depends upon the building. Remember, everything is six-foot distance and the size of the room. So some will have, maybe somebody can answer that. Do we have any idea? Don't know.
The average.
Depends upon the size of the room.
Elsie, was the average capacity of a classroom, is that the question?
No, I think she's asking about the cafeteria.
Oh, the cafeteria, no, I think that would depend.
It depends upon the size. So it could be, at the high school, maybe 50, 75 students.
I saw you showed.
Somebody's saying something.
Eighty-seven in the large and forty-seven in the small.
Eighty-seven in the large cafeteria at the high school, and forty-seven in the small cafeteria for the high school.
Thank you.
Total? Total, 100 at the middle school. When you add all the three different areas, the small caf, the new caf, and the big caf, I don't even know, I forgot what it's called.
So seeing that, I immediately thought of, you know, the monitors, I have to clean those very quickly in between class sessions.
But you know what, they're pretty good at doing that, that's, they're used to doing that, I think, yes.
Oh, I saw that you put up the, a couple of the schools. What does North Main look like, since North Main is a very different type?
I don't have a North Main picture, but I will have it up. We're trying to get as many pictures as possible, because I think people need to see a visual. Again, I think if you're a parent, you need to talk to your child when you go into the cafeteria, it's going to look really different, but it's going to be okay. And this is temporary. We're going to get through this, and, you know, in less than six months, I'm hoping for some good news.
So they could still buy their lunch, right? They get online, socially distant, online, buy their lunch?
I think so, yes.
I just, I just want to comment on Lorraine's, I know it doesn't pertain to the cafeteria, but for the classroom piece of it, because, and I know Dawn will probably speak to this later when we had visitation committee, we were able to see a couple of the classrooms at a couple of the buildings, but it's important to keep in mind that the administration kind of informed us that they weren't really able to set up those classrooms until the final numbers came in for those buildings, as to whether or not the students were going to be remote only. Otherwise, they would have been doing twice as much work, the custodians and bringing the desks in. So I think now that those buildings have those figures, they're able to go in and now take care of their classroom sizes, correct?
Yes, yes, I think it's all contingent upon who is fully remote, who's in the building, what schedules we have. Again, it's, I have to say that the administrators who are doing all of this work, this is daunting. Something as simple as going to lunch is a daunting task. And so I do want to thank the administrators for doing all of this work, and the custodians, because they've really been working very hard, and we still haven't put up our directional signs, right? Those pieces are coming in next week, Thursday and Friday, which will tell students which way to go, students and staff, to maintain six feet of social distancing. All of that is going to be done, be done next week. So a lot of work. But we're happy, because we're going to get the kids, I think, you know, it'll be good, we'll get students in the building. And, and I think, I think when I spoke to Emily, she said she's excited about coming back to school, so it's all worth it. Here's some things, we've spent 1.35 million dollars, a lot of money. We have disposable masks, gloves, sneeze guard, I had mentioned this before, this is a sneeze guard, hand sanitizers. You'll see some that are standing up and some that are attached to the wall. The nurses have all these infrared thermometers, so that they don't have to come in contact with this, with another person. We have antibacterial wipes, which I have a large bucket here, because I'm sitting next to Dr. Hassler, and I have to make sure that when I hand him the remote, it's clean, and so I have my antibacterial wipes, which are safe, they're safe to use, so I'll be the test person today.
There's an example of the hand sanitizer machine on the stage, too, so
Yes.
if the people viewing at home might be able to see, those will be in the high-traffic areas, yes, Patrick?
Yes, and used at night to disinfect the classrooms and the buildings.
Yes, and then we have those Pacific Air Misters. I think there's a one around there, and you may have seen it when somebody spoke, they sprayed afterwards. That's, that's part of sanitizing everything. We need new garbage receptacles, because everything is going to be, remember how we all said we didn't want to use plastic? Well, guess what, we're going back to, we're going back to plastic. And so if we have plastic, we have to throw it out. And then Plexiglas barriers in high-traffic areas. This, this afternoon, I saw an arrival of a truck, and it had all of these large dividers, and it's going to be used, I believe, in some of the nurse's offices. There was a question about, are we going to have a separate room? We do, we're required by the DOH to have a room for students who are just usually sick, and then students who are experiencing COVID-like symptoms. So we have to have two separate rooms, and this week, we had a meeting with the nursing department and our, and our building principals, and talked about protocol and how we're going to handle things. So we've been doing a lot of this work together to make sure, again, because safety is our, is our number-one priority. And then these are just examples, I talked about, the sanitizers, the stand-up one, and then, then one that's attached to the wall. Another example of a sneeze guard. We actually have, and our custodians made about 200 of them themselves. These we purchased, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, these we purchased. We also purchased another group from Home Depot, I believe. They're, they're not as sturdy as these, but we felt that, especially at our elementary levels, where teachers do a lot of work with the students, that we needed to make sure our teachers had this kind of a Plexiglas in between, so that we, again, maintain everyone's safety. And then gloves and masks and our disinfecting wipes. So the last piece that I'm just going to briefly talk about and then go into questions is our social-emotional support. As I mentioned before, we have Dr. Pickens, we are going to be working with Eye Opening Enterprises. We have our first webinar, which is on Thursday, the title of that webinar, so if you're a teacher and you're listening, I recommend that you sign on, it's called "Prioritize Your Wellness and Self-Care," right? One of the most important things for the people who are coming in to take care of our children and our families is that you first have to take care of yourself. And so I encourage everyone to sign on and listen to Dr. Pickens, he's amazing. He's just so well, he's so thoughtful, and I think the things that he's going to talk about are really going to be important for you as an administrator, teacher, staff member in the district, Board of Education member, to be able to take care of yourself, because right now, we know that a lot of people are experiencing a lot of stress, anxiety, and this is all very new, but it's important to take care of yourself. So I encourage you to please, if you haven't done so far, please sign on. And then he's going to be coming back on September 30th to do another presentation. What's next?
Is the first presentation going to be taped, so that we can watch it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thanks for asking that, yes. What's next? So at our, as per the governor's order, the governor's been giving us a lot of orders, and so we have one more. We will have to have a detailed plan posted on our website by August 21st. We will then be announcing the week of the, by Friday, August 28th, the AB groups. I know that that's super important for our families who may be working with other families for childcare, and then professional development for our staff, and ongoing communication through videos, printed materials, prior to the school opening. I think that what we've learned is that people like videos, I think they like short videos, and we may have been doing some really long videos, this is another one that's going to be long, but hopefully you can fast-forward to whatever you think is important or pertinent to you. We're going to continue to do this, and we're going to continue to refine this, and I continue to say to everyone, we're going to be safe, and we're going to be able to reopen school safely.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you answered my question while I went to the bathroom, but how are the classrooms being cleaned between classes?
We're going to, we're going to answer that, that's a part of our Q and A.
Okay.
So we'll, well, because otherwise, we have a little, we've kind of worked our schedule out, so we, we have all of our questions, and I will begin with question number one. Will all the classes students requested be available during the hybrid semester?
As of right now, yes, we're planning on offering all of our courses that, you know, we would typically offer. I mean, there are, again, some, there are logistical challenges where, you know, there are some classes that are just naturally more, you know, instructionally beneficial for kids when they're physically present because of hands-on activities and things like that. We're working on things like science labs and those sorts of things. However, right now, we're planning on offering as many classes as we possibly can, so yes.
Thank you. Mr. or Dr. Vias, what support can the district provide for families who do not have internet and/or Wi-Fi access in their home?
So, as a district, we have purchased about 100 T-Mobile Wi-fis last month, and we were, we were sharp enough to order in time, and we received those devices. We will be working with the, through Dr. Morales's department and distributing to that, to the students who really need them. We do have a list, as of now, we have about 12 students. Their parents do not have the, either the wireless access or the internet at home available. Also, we are working with our local cable companies, and we have a plan to use their services if needed to be, to make sure that we provide the internet access to the students who do not have this of access available at home.
Thank you. At the high school and middle school levels, as I have students in both, how will changing classes be handled?
So, students at the secondary level will continue to change classes, as we've mentioned, while wearing masks and maintaining social distancing. Additionally, each classroom will have hand sanitizing canister and a canister of disinfecting wipes. These wipes may be used between classes by a staff member to clean and disinfect desks that were recently used. And although it's not recommended that students engage in any cleaning activities, I think the use of these individual disinfecting wipes, particularly at the secondary level, is safe and unlikely to be a problem for a student if they were sort of uncomfortable with what was happening. So this would be another means that the student could do to sort of disinfect the desk and that area. And Elsie, you alluded to this, we expect the COVID-related signage to be in next week and installed next week and the following week. And so those are floor graphics, the directional signs that you mentioned for hallways and stairwells. So, you know, we're, we're doing the majority of the disinfection and cleaning at night, after hours, so to speak, but there is the opportunity, you know, at the secondary level.
So the student, as they come into a classroom, would have to grab a wipe and clean their own desk.
Or a staff member, yes.
Is there alcohol in the disinfectant and the stuff?
No.
Okay.
Not as far as I know, no.
They're right here, right?
No, the sanitizer, that stuff, the liquid.
Oh, the sanitizer does have alcohol in it, yes.
Okay, so, you know, years ago, their kids do drink it, so, you know, young children, so that's something to.
No, don't say that.
Well, it's been done, so, you know, that's why I asked that question.
So, this is very important, if you are a child, the hand sanitizer, you do not drink it. Do not taste it, do not put your mouth near it, this is not something you want to do.
No consuming, hands-only?
No consuming.
Okay.
Question number four is, I was hoping the district would consider allowing high school junior drivers to park for the day this year. So I know that I spoke with Mr. Cassidy about it, this is very much a consideration. He's shaking his head yes, so it's very much a consideration, he will be reaching out and letting everyone know. Did you want to say something? Yes?
A letter will be going out this weekend, and we'll start the online driver safety course next Tuesday.
A letter will go out at the end of this weekend, and they will start the online driver safety course.
On Tuesday, we will have a pursuit to start the online driver course.
Starting on Tuesday. So similar to what senior drivers had to do, you'll get an email that will prompt you to go ahead and take the online safety course, follow the directions, and it will be open to junior drivers.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Can adults take that driving course, or that little seminar? Thank you.
Good answer.
What happens with students who need AIS services for math and reading?
To, similar to our conversation earlier, at the secondary level, AIS is something that is scheduled into a student's schedule at the, at the middle school, high school, at the elementary level. Depending upon what the student's schedule is going to be, now I'm talking remote-only, the AIS providers, E and L teachers can provide services to kids, particularly during those small group, independent group sessions that I was speaking about. During in-person, it's going to be handled and scheduled the way that it has always been.
Okay. Do we need to fill out the bus form if we are choosing the remote option?
That answer is no. If you submitted, if you notified the school district that you plan on, that you're requesting the remote-only option, Transportation Department is removing the students from routing, from that list, as well as the parents who have notified the district that they plan on driving students themselves, so no need to duplicate.
Okay. Okay. How will transportation keep children safe? What is the plan for social distancing for bus pickup?
So for, for our students, it's our, it's our hope that our students and parents will make sure that social distancing is occurring at bus stops. As students get onto the bus, they'll enter, they will occupy the seats in, in the back of the bus first and then fill them forward, sitting one student per seat unless they're with a member of the same household. At the end of each tier, between the, the high school run, the K1 middle school run, and then the two, five runs, drivers will wipe down the high-touch areas, such as the tops of the seats and the handrails, using products that have been issued by the transportation department. Gloves and face shields must be worn when disinfecting between the tiers. And then in between the AM and PM run, the buses will be disinfected. For the afternoon, we'll do the, the same exact thing. As students get onto the buses at their schools, they'll, they'll come on and they'll go right to the back of the bus first and then they'll be dismissed. Once they arrive at schools, they'll start their safety protocols that they need to do at every single building.
So, and I think it's important to note that when you're waiting for the bus, you need to keep six feet of social distancing so that for the younger children, it's going to be something that we need our parents to help us with and for the older students, keep to six feet of social distancing.
Particularly if you don't have your own mask while you're at the bus stop, as soon as the bus pulls up and you get onto the bus, if you don't have one, one will be provided to you. But if you don't have a mask while you're at the bus stop, you should be practicing social distancing.
Thank you. How will students be graded on their online work?
Grading of student work is going to happen the way that traditionally happens. If a student is a remote student and they're submitting assignments online, the, they'll, it'll electronically get sent to the teacher and the teacher will grade it as they have previously.
Okay. Gyms are not allowed to, to open as per the governor. So how can you have gym classes with kids sharing equipment?
So we're, part of our, our protocol is to avoid the sharing of equipment. P E classes are going to be outside as much as we possibly can get them outside. In the event that we can't have them out, the, the gyms will be used, but obviously we'll maintain the Department of Health guidelines. And in the event that there's enough space in the gym, then we're going to have to find alternatives for physical education as well.
But I also think the governor also, gyms are allowed to open.
Right, I think that it's a different type of gym that, that the governor is referring to.
If a child is ill with a negative COVID test, will, will a negative COVID test be required before returning to school? Actually, that was one of the questions that we had with our nurses this past week. If a student comes to school and they have COVID-like symptoms, any of the symptoms that we have listed, whether it's a fever, coughing, all of those symptoms, that student is going to be required to go see their physician and they're required to take a test. The student will be required to have a negative test in order to return to school. It's, it's the standard, it's what we're required to do by the Orange County Health Department. The next question is, the EPA has calculated the kill time of disinfectant products. What products will be given throughout the day to the students and staff to sanitize their own desk and workplace spaces? And what's the kill time? Kill time, some products need to be left wet for two minutes or more.
So the kill time for the solution used for our disinfecting wipes is approximately one minute and I believe the name of that is this, the solution that's added to the wipes is Oxavir, something like that. And the Pure Tab solution, that's what we use for the electrostatic sprayers. The kill time for that product is about two minutes, but that's used after school, so there are no students around, so that should matter less.
Okay, thank you. Will the number of students allowed into the restroom at the same time be limited so as to avoid overcrowding? The answer is yes. How will schools dismiss, dismiss students and how will students be picked up?
Does that mean?
Did I take that one?
No. Well, let me just say this, since nobody's answering. One of the things we know for sure that we're going to have staggered dismissals, right? So we have to make sure that we're not dismissing all of the students at the same time. Students that are being picked up, it's a little difficult in some of the buildings. I think, for example, like North Main, you don't have a large area, so we're, we're going to have to figure that out. The other thing, and this question doesn't, doesn't ask it, but some of the parents are saying, you know, how long is the wait going to be if I have to pick up my child? The truth of that answer is, I'm really not sure. It depends upon how many people decide to come and pick up their students. So again, as far as a school district, we are going to be staggering our dismissals so that we don't have this mad rush of students leaving at the same time because students would probably forget that they have to social distance. And again, I go back to, that's one of the reasons and one of the things that we're going to work with our students when we have those first two weeks, the A1 and, and B1, so that we can talk about, how do you leave? I mean, something as simple that we've always done now seems super complicated. But yes, we will have staggered pickups and, and I do want to, you know, remind parents that there may be additional wait time. It would be disingenuous if I said, no, there's not going to be additional wait time. It is because more people will be picking up their, their children.
And some of those pieces, once, sorry, some of those pieces are going to be communicated at the building level. I mean, one of the things we're talking about is traffic patterns during dismissal. There's an increase in the number of parents that are picking their students up. You know, some of those procedures are going to have to be modified from what they were previously just to accommodate for some of these new processes. So some of those details haven't been finalized yet, yep.
I just want to speak to the parent side of that because, and I've been guilty of this in the past, so full disclosure, is patience. I know that there have been times that I've scheduled my middle school daughter's orthodontist appointment for 3:20 because I know that I can pick her up at 3:00 and get to the orthodontist by 3:20. Don't do that because I think we all need to be aware, and we've talked about this as parents and amongst friends, it's not going to be perfect, it's going to be a little hectic, it is going to have to get worked through. So please do our parts as parents not to be in a rush. And I know that's hard. Hopefully, we don't have too many places to still go because nothing's really, we can't do anything.
And certainly...
But just please don't be in a rush.
If you're, if you're a returning family, particularly at the elementary level, the first week or two of the school year inevitably always has delays. We're sending emails the first few days of school home saying, we're delayed a half an hour, you know, this dismissal was delayed. So, I mean, we're going to have those bumps along the way as well.
I wanted, you just said something about staggered pickups, so if I could just build on to that a little bit. The remote schedule that you shared for Mondays and when we're totally remote, that's not necessarily the same schedule that would be Tuesday through Friday. So when you said the high school is nine to two, Tuesday it's back to seven o'clock?
Correct, yes. That's exactly right.
I think that there's some confusion out there about that.
Yes, and even, even if you're, even if you're a, a parent who selected remote only for their child, because we're not going to have fully remote sections by student. It's going to be based upon class. Some classes are going to, you know, we may be able to get remote only, some, you know, there's probably going to be quite a few that we're not going to be able to get remote at all, other than the students are going to be attached to the remote-only portion of the hybrid schedule and they're going to have to follow the, the, the traditional seven to two schedule. So for, even if you are a remote option student, the schedule Tuesday through Friday will still be the traditional building schedule.
So plan to be online at 7:00 AM if you're going to tune in to a first period class?
Right, if you're going to have a first period class, yes, you'll be online at seven o'clock in the morning.
I have one child in the high school that is requesting remote learning and one child out of district that we will be using the hybrid model. Will this be allowable and can my son still use transportation for the out-of-district hybrid model? The answer is yes.
Yes.
Yes. You can certainly do that. Why do kids need to wear masks while sitting at their desk if, if they are six feet apart?
So I'll address that. So I'm just going to briefly read a couple of passages from a document from the American Academy of Pediatrics that addresses this issue really well, I think. So, "A significant number of individuals with COVID-19 have no symptoms and can transmit the virus through respiratory droplets. These droplets are released when coughing, sneezing, loud speaking and singing. A mask acts as a barrier and can decrease the amount of respiratory droplets released into the air. While it's not a perfect barrier, it is one of the best tools we have to prevent the spread of COVID-19, along with social distancing. In order to make the indoor classroom seating as safe as possible, as safe as we possibly can, mask-wearing is advisable at all times. It may sometimes be difficult for children to stay six feet apart. Masks can help prevent the spread of the virus in respiratory droplets released when coughing and sneezing. In addition, masks will also prevent children from spreading germs by touching their nose and face. Schools and teachers should structure in times when students can take off masks and have a mask break. These breaks can occur hourly, ideally during quiet reading time or study time when students are not speaking. Children may also remove their masks while eating, playing outdoors and during gym activities requiring physical exertion, provided they can remain six feet apart." So I think that's a very good sort of explanation of, you know, why we're requiring that and why it's a, a recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics.
And we, we, we're going to add that to our handbook. I had spoken to Carol and we feel that that's a really good document so parents can reference or to have a question.
May I say something?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be directly to the younger ones, like a kindergarten or one, you know, first grader. So this is really going to be difficult for them, coming into school, wearing masks, right? And you talk about social, emotional, and now you've got the child that is very nervous and very scared and now wants to hug the teacher or is upset. What is, what's going to happen with that situation? Or he has a runny nose or she has a runny nose and needs assistance with helping with wiping the nose? Or they decide that they have this, well, not decide, but they may have sensory issues and can't wear the mask. We're not sending them away, we're not sending them home, we're not going to call parents and say, you know, little Johnny took off his mask four times. What are we doing and how are we going to approach that?
So it's, it's actually the next question, but, but let me, let me say a little bit about that. One of the things that we're going to have to teach our children, especially the younger children, is how to wear a mask, how to appropriately wear a mask. Actually, today Carol was doing a video and we're going to be having videos for our students, how do you, how do you wear a mask appropriately and how do you wash your hands? So there's a lot of teaching that's going to go on, right? I think that the important piece is that the adults will be wearing a mask, so there's a barrier for them. To go on to the student whose nose is runny or they need something, we're still human, you know, and there's still a part of us, we have to be careful, but, but let's not forget that there's, what we're doing is, is, we need to be human on how we approach our students, our teachers, because the things that we basically need haven't changed. How we do it, it might be a little bit different, but I, I'm pretty confident that our, our teachers will know how to do that instinctively, they just have to be careful. So that comes with a question that I have from a parent who reads, "From what I've read, students with special needs that can't wear a mask can be exempt from wearing the mask. How will that work?" So one of the things I shared in my video yesterday is I said, if there's a child for a specific reason that cannot wear a mask, they need to reach out to Dr. Sassy, their building principal, let us know and we'll make accommodations, right? Because to say that everyone 100% of the time will be wearing a mask, you know, is not true. And we will have mask breaks and we will do everything that we need. Again, these sneeze guards are really a great thing to have because it really creates a barrier between me and, and anyone else. So there are going to be exceptions, we just have to know who those children are and we have to be prepared for them.
Elsie, guards like that, would that be what the speech teachers are using?
Yes.
Because they need to see their lips.
Correct. And we also have masks that are clear. So we've also ordered masks where the student can see the mouth. You know, one of the things that we note is that those of us who may have difficulty hearing, we're a little bit older, we, we need to be able to see someone's mouth to kind of read their lips too. So again, we're, we're looking at how does that, how does that look like and how do we make sure that our, that our students are, you know, able to understand what we have to say? So yes, these are for our PPS, you know, the, the related service providers who will be doing work.
So teachers will be wearing the clear ones?
Not all teachers, not all. The primary teachers may be wearing clear ones. Because remember, when you're starting to teach children how to read or pronounce or, you know, make sounds, they need to see your lips. So yes, they will, they will have clear ones. The next question. Let's talk about ventilation. Moles are recommended to have updated HVAC systems, MERV 13 filters. Now gyms are also, why not schools?
So we've, we've addressed this a couple of times and we'll address it again. So in an effort to increase fresh air circulation at the high school, the HVAC system here will be evaluated by the Train Corporation, the manufacturer of the chillers and the air handlers here. The goal will be to recalibrate and rebalance the system to bring in and circulate more fresh outside air. Furthermore, new air filters are being installed with the MERV 13 value, so that's the recommended filter to capture droplets and aerosols and things. MERV stands for Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value and basically it's simple, the higher the value, the more effective the filter is. So we, we are also going to have Train evaluate the indoor air quality here at this building. So this is our newest building, it has air conditioning, it has a, you know, a full HVAC system. What are we doing at the, the older buildings that do not have that? So we are, you know, considering working with what we have. It's primarily unit ventilators in a lot of the classrooms. We're opening the damper, which is essentially allows fresh air in to somewhere around a 40% level, which is much bigger, higher number than what is typical. The typical setting is more like 10%. So, you know, this is, if you think about it, particularly in winter, that kind of thing, or if it's humid out, you don't want to bring in cold or humid air, you want to sort of regulate that, how much of that air you're bringing in. So we're going to be bringing in more fresh air to be circulated throughout the building when feasible, and everyone knows this, we've said this a million times. We're also going to have windows opened as much as possible. When it's hot, fans can be used with some new restrictions and caveats. The CDC is recommending that we don't have a fan that blows from one person onto the other because that could spread, you know, aerosols and droplets and things. So what we're thinking is, we could have fans that are drawing air out of the room, you know, in a window or into a hallway, or have fans that are pointed into unoccupied areas. You know, so those are some of the things we're working on. Again, we're, we're, we're trying to be flexible, we're going to evaluate how things are going and make adjustments as necessary.
Thank you. The next question is, what is the quarantine protocol if someone tests positive? I think I mentioned this the last, last time. So we work very closely with the Orange County Health Department and they determine protocols. So if a student or a staff member tests positive and we are informed either by the child's or adult or staff member's doctor, or we get a call from the Orange County Health Department, then we begin what's called contact tracing. And contact tracing is in conjunction with the Orange County Health Department. They will not tell me the student's name, they will tell the school nurse the student's name, and then they will work hand in hand with where was that student the day, last time they were in school. Then they will be reaching out to families and letting them know that one of the students or a teacher tested positive and then they will be monitored. One of the questions that I've been asked is, well, does that mean that school will be closed? The answer to that question is, according to the Orange County Health Department, the school will not be closed. If a student tests positive or a student comes in with COVID-like symptoms, we certainly will shut down a classroom and we will disinfect it and then give it 24 hours. Again, we have to make the assumption that just because someone has a runny nose or is not feeling well, that they're not necessarily COVID-positive. The other thing is, is that information is not going to be shared from the school district. In other words, if you call up a building administrator and say to them, you know, I heard that Eric Hessler was COVID-positive, you, we're not allowed to give that information. There are laws that dictate that we can't share that information. What we will share is if someone came in contact. And again, I go back to safety precautions. It's important when we're in schools and we're in the classrooms that everybody's wearing their masks and that students are staying six feet socially distant. The other piece that I shared, and I, and I know that a parent wrote an email and was concerned, is that according to the Orange County Health Department, we will not be shutting schools down unless we have 9% of an infection rate. And that is, they're, they're the ones that we're going to work with. So we don't arbitrarily decide we're going to close school down, they will work with us and they will tell us when, when that's necessary. us and they will tell us when, when that's necessary.
That's 9% in the school or 9% in the county?
9% in the county.
Wasn't it the region the last time?
Yes, 9% in the county, yes. And so, which means that we are, the infection rate is going up tremendously. I think right now we're under 1%, so we're hoping that that will maintain that way, but, but I just have to be honest and transparent with parents that this is what I've been told and we have to work hand in hand with the Orange County Health Department. And Dr. Gelman is the person who dictates what we do and not do as far as health protocols. But thank you for, for making that point because it's 9% in the, in the county. They call it the region, but I call it the county. I think this is the last question. Will transportation be provided to students in out-of-district placement whose schools are physically open during the first two weeks, which Monroe would be, will be teaching remotely? The answer is yes. Any student who is attending an out-of-district placement, they will have transportation to whatever program or school they'll be attending. And with that, we are concluding our Q and A piece.
Okay. Thank you so much, and I think at this point we are going to take a quick five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, we are back from the break and there was no board business that took place. We're moving on with the agenda to the overview of department chairs and district coordinators. Presentation by Dr. Hassler and Mr. Kravitz.
Okay, thank you to the Board of Education. So at our last Board of Education meeting, the board asked for some additional information regarding the department chair and coordinator positions that we have in the district and the hiring process that we go through in filling those positions. So I'm going to start with just a kind of a brief overview of what the positions are, what the roles and responsibilities are. In, in our school district, we have district-wide positions, which include the music coordinator K-12, library K-12, health services K-12, physical education K-12, art K-12. We have a grade three through eight gifted and talented director, we have a K through five computers department chair. At the high school level, we have department chairs in science, social studies, math, English, business, special education, and guidance. At the middle school, we have department chairs in science, social studies, math, special education, and guidance. And we also have seven, 12 coordinators in technology education, health, family and consumer science, and world languages. The roles and responsibilities of these individuals include developing a budget for their, for their department at their building level, they run the monthly department meetings of their department, they assist in the organization of professional development for their teachers, they assist in the development of curriculum, they regularly attend building council meetings at the middle school and the high school, as well as district-wide committees, they assist in filling staffing positions with administration, assistant scheduling, they conduct observations in accordance with our APPR plan, and they also are required in doing that to be lead evaluator certified. One of, one of the questions that I've been asked by the board is, what are their roles during this shift in scheduling regarding school closure and the hybrid model and things like that? Their, their responsibilities remain very much the same. They're, they're still responsible for creating their building, building level budgets, they still are required contractually to have monthly department meetings, again, they assist in professional development. Over the summer, we had a number of different summer curriculum projects that the department chairs worked on. We still hold regular building council meetings and district-wide committee meetings, we still have staffing positions. So all of these responsibilities are still the case. Last year, due to the full closure, the, the state granted a waiver to all school districts for the APPR plan. However, that is not in place for the 2021 school year, so we are still planning on conducting observations the way that they've been outlined in our, in our plan. Matt's going to speak a little bit about the, the HR piece of filling the department chairs.
Thank you. So for those people who are brave enough to take on the roles and responsibilities of a department chair or district-wide coordinator, typically we post our positions. For example, those positions this year were posted on May 15th. Interested candidates apply by submitting a letter of interest to Human Resources, I then forward it to the, the building principals. If there are multiple applicants for a position, interviews are held. Oftentimes, we've had one applicant for the position, so typically that application process or interview process amounts to a discussion between the applicant and the principal about roles and responsibilities and expectations. The department chairs are recommended by the high school and middle school building principals, and the district-wide coordinators are recommended by, by Eric. If, if somebody, if no one applies for the position, what we would do is we would reevaluate and determine the best plan of action to support the curricular needs of the teachers and students in a, in a particular department. And then, you know, once they're, they're recommended and they're board approved, then they go on and take on all the roles and responsibilities that, that Eric had discussed.
I have a question.
Thank you, I was going to say, any questions?
I have a question. So is there a minimum number of staff in a department that would necessitate a chair? So is there, so you say, social studies has 12 teachers, another department has two teachers. Is there a minimum number of staff that would require a chair, like?
The answer to that question is no, because, for example, the, the K-five computer department chair doesn't technically have staff, teachers that they oversee, so that, that's, that's really a department of one, but she's still in charge of organizing computer instruction at the K-five level. But there aren't any computer teachers at the, at the K-five level?
But she helps, and she helps the, the directions of all the teaching assistants in all those buildings.
Right.
Dr. Hassler, what is the reduction in their other responsibilities if they take this position?
You want to talk about that, the schedule, how the formula for the reduction? It's based upon the number of staff that are within the department.
Correct. Sorry, my computer's about to sign out, so I'm waiting. Is yours happening too? Okay, oh, it's about to sign up. So I'm sorry. The question again?
The question is, they're taking on additional responsibility.
Release period is based upon the number of people within a particular department. So, for example, if you have a department of 20 teachers or 21 teachers, you typically, at the high school level, you typically have two periods of release time. So you would teach three periods. The other two periods would be used to meet with those teachers, observe those teachers, do the, you know, other the other things that a department chair would need to get done on a daily basis.
Thank you for the clarification.
It's calculated on the number of staff in the department.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to overview of an advanced placement exam. Presentation by Dr. Hassler.
Sure. And I'd like to invite up to the stage Mr. Cassidy, the high school principal, as well as Mrs. Arroyo, one of the assistant principals from the high school.
And you can take those waters, too.
Everybody good?
Yes. Go ahead.
So thank you very much to the Board of Education for the opportunity for Mr. Cassidy, Mrs. Arroyo, myself, to speak to you about the Advanced Placement Program as well as the advanced placement opportunities that we have in our high school. As well as talk about some of the implications that the closure in the spring had on the AP program and the AP exam process. So, just a kind of a very quick overview of the AP, the Advanced Placement Program. Basically, AP exams are standardized exams that are designed to measure how well a student has mastered content and skills in a specific course. Traditionally, the AP exam consists of two parts, two sections. Section one is a series of multiple choice questions. Section two is a section of free response questions, which has traditionally been an essay. The exams, again, the exams are standardized. They're scored. Scores range from one through five. And if a student scores a three, or four, or a five, they could potentially earn college credit. The college credit is granted based upon the institution, and that varies from college to college. And I want to very quickly just clarify the difference between college-level courses that are being offered at the high school in comparison to an AP course that we have. We have many college-level courses at our high school that are run in partnership with various institutions. An example would be Calculus BC. Calculus BC at the high school is offered through SUNY Albany. If you take that for a full year, you can earn up to eight college credits through SUNY Albany. If the student chooses to pay the fee, the tuition fee to SUNY Albany, and they successfully complete the course, they will get eight SUNY Albany credits. At the conclusion of that course, students also have the option to take the College Calculus AP exam. Or the student could just take the course to become more, better educated in calculus in the event that they pursue, want to pursue mathematics down the road. So there's a couple of different options that we offer in the high school for students to be able to get college credit. The AP programs that we offer currently at the high school, there's quite a few of them: biology, calculus, chemistry, computer science, English Language and Composition, English Language and Literature, Environmental Science, European History, Physics I, Physics C, Electrism and Magnetism, Physics C, Mechanics, US Government and Politics, US History and World History, Modern History. We also offer an opportunity to our kids to, if they choose, they can take only an AP exam without having to complete a course. For example, later on, we're going to speak about our AP results. Students can just choose to sign up and take an AP exam. We had a student this year who took the Chinese AP exam and scored a five on the Chinese AP exam. We don't offer Chinese at our high school. So, Mr. Cassidy and Mrs. Arroyo are going to speak a little bit more about outside of the 2020 school year, what the traditional AP exam process and exams look like in greater detail.
So as you can see, before the COVID hit us, the Advanced Placement used to be a spring deadline for registration. One of the things that has also changed in the recent past with that is how we collect the payment. We used to have the students provide us checks, but we now use the RevCheck system to pay the college board for those exams. The exams were scheduled in May, and we would get the results in July. And the students, it was in-person. We would set aside classrooms for the two weeks that the AP exams were being administered. Students would go into those classrooms or cafeteria to take those exams. And we would also assign our proctors. Usually, it would be our school counselors that would proctor those exams. And then in there, they weren't able to use any resources. It was just like a regents exam. You couldn't have your calculator or anything else in those rooms with you.
So, obviously, this year, because the exams were traditionally given in paper, in person, when schools were closed across the country, the college board had to shift the way that they administered these exams. So now we're going to speak a little bit more about what did the process in the exams look like during the COVID closure?
So, beginning the 2019-2020 academic year, there were some changes that were slated for the AP exams. Payment and registration was slightly different. There were, the deadlines and the timelines changed for the AP courses. The full year and semester one courses, you had to register and pay for them by the November deadline. And for semester two courses, there was a March deadline. That was regardless of the COVID-19. However, once, you know, we were thrust into this remote learning, the exams went from the in-person paper model to the exams being online. Every student received an e-ticket to access the exams. They received that via the AP classroom and via email. The exams were shortened. So like Dr. Hassler stated previously, the traditional way was for the exams to have a two-part model with multiple choice questions and free response questions. As after COVID, we went, we moved to just the free response questions, which were the essay questions. Students had to write a short essay. That essay was to include supporting facts and details. That they could use notes. They can use electronic devices, textbooks, and the internet. However, the answers and the responses had to be original. Several methods were used to prevent and combat cheating. They added anti-plagiarism software. Student responses were sent to the AP teachers for review. Test, on test day, students received a verification code that they had to use in order to enter the exam and start. Exams would be administered on the same day and time worldwide. That was to prevent and combat any students from sharing information. Students who were caught cheating would not be able to use, to make up the test or to take any future exams. The college board also offered several opportunities throughout the closure for students to review information, practice, in addition to speaking with their teachers and doing video conferences to review the information that was going to be on the exams.
Mrs. Arroyo, when you're speaking about these, you're talking, these are protocol put in place by college board, not Monroe Woodbury, correct?
Correct.
So, because schools were closed, testing was done remotely in students' homes. And due to the, you know, the online nature, as well as to the method in which the exams were administered, there were a number of different challenges that arose due to that type of testing environment. So now we'll speak a little bit more about those.
So we, during the testing throughout Orange County, we heard that students were having difficulty uploading their information. So they were able to then, you know, once they, once they set their permission up, they ran into these issues uploading their answers. Some of our kids actually took pictures and sent them to their teachers before they submitted their answers, so we had those as well. And we hope that we could use those in an appeal process, which will come up in a minute. If you were unable to upload your exam, or they didn't receive your information, and you contacted them, they gave you the opportunity to retake the next exam. There was an appeal process for scores of students who received only ones and twos. What happened there was teachers were able to go in and see the students' exams. And they were then using the rubric that was, and criteria that was provided. They were then able to present a case in order to help the students earn the higher score. Here in our district, and this was not just our district, it was in several districts, there were some teachers that could not get into the system to appeal. We contacted the college board, and then we were instructed that the teacher had to reach out to the college board to work on getting that system fixed. And then there is no appeals process this year for students or their parents because those are only based on the multiple choice questions in the past. I can say, you know, as we were hearing that the students were having difficulties with Wi-Fi issues and things like that, we were providing guidance to our students and families that when their child was taking the exam, to shut off all the other devices to make sure that their child had the dedicated Wi-Fi line in order to hopefully upload their answers without any issues.
I'm sorry, who was giving that advice while the live testing was going on? The students were reaching out to the school to say that they couldn't get on?
So, yeah, we reached out. We were hearing as the exams were progressing that some students, like, who took the first exam had a difficulty maybe uploading, so then we were providing information out to our teachers and anybody who contacted us to make sure that you were only having the one device going on, so that maybe you wouldn't run into that difficulty.
So, and I know you said Orange County, you know, throughout had, you know, connectivity issues, but specific to our school, do you have information on the students that had issues with technology and submitting, and also the ones that are appealing for a one or a two?
So I received only two emails from parents concerning the difficulty uploading a device. And the second part was about the appeals?
The second part was, do we have a lot of students that are submitting an appeal or a review for their one or two score?
I can answer that question. The challenge is, because previously, the way that, the way that the, in the traditional model, the way that the appeals process worked was that there was, there's an initial appeal window, but then the student could file an appeal to have their test rescored through October 31st. However, the rescoring in the traditional model was for the multiple choice section. But because there was no multiple choice section in this, what the college board said to us was, now the student doesn't have the ability to be able to file an appeal for that. So right now, we're in the middle of conversations with them to discuss this because we have a number of teachers who were not locked out of the, because it's, you know, it's technical now. Everything is through the system. There were a number of teachers who were able to get in. They were able to look at their student scores, and they were able to say, this doesn't look, you know, accurate with regards to a student's score, because they got a one or two, I think that they should have gotten something different, and they could file that appeal. We currently have five teachers that have been unable to do that. And quite frankly, it's unfair to the students because the teachers are locked out, that the students don't get the benefit of having the same appeal that all other students got. So we're currently in the process of working out how that's going to unfold, because one of the issues that I had initially was, we were under the impression that the kids were going to be able to appeal, but that multiple choice appeal, there was also a fee attached to it. So because this is information that was being brought to them pre and post the July 31st deadline, it's unfair to the kids also to even say to them that you have to come up with $30 in order to be able to file this appeal. So we are still in the middle of, we are still in the middle of working this out with the college board in terms of how this is going to unfold fairly with our kids.
Okay. And you'll give us an update when you have?
Yes, absolutely.
And also, the appeal is based on the teacher. So the teacher would read all the exams and match it to the criteria. If they felt that the criteria was met, then they would do the appeal. If they felt it wasn't met, they would agree with what the college board had said. The teachers didn't reach out to us, so I don't know if, your question was, how many teachers wrote appeals for students? But that is probably something we could reach out to teachers to see what that was about.
And the challenge is, technically speaking, the college board doesn't even really want to hear from administration. Because technically, the teacher is the one who is supposed to be doing the appeal. They don't even really dig down into individual student issues with administration because the teacher, according to the college board, the teacher is the one who has the knowledge of what the typical performance is of that student, therefore is the one who's most equipped to file the appeal.
They won't allow us to appeal on their behalf.
Right.
Right. I'm just saying, just from, you know, global picture of how our students fared with this online platform of the AP tests, it would be helpful to see how many scored lower than their teachers felt that they deserved.
Right. We have, we have a decent-sized list of kids.
So I'd be interested in the outcome.
Yeah, definitely. Agreed.
Is it typical for only ones and twos to be appealed, or is that, was that just put in place for this current?
Well, part of this system was also, you know, if I go back, when they talk about the the different procedures specifically to this exam, this is also an opportunity for them to identify kids that they potentially think didn't get a score that was higher or lower based upon the typical performance of the student. So they were relying partially on the teachers to help them screen through, does it look like this kid may have gotten assistance based upon their performance of their score and their traditional functioning within the classroom. But that being said, if the only method of appeal still is driven by the teacher, the teacher should be able to appeal on behalf of their kid.
Right. But what I'm saying is, if a student received a three, and they're looking at colleges that only accept fours and fives as a
Right.
as a acceptable score for credit, that student would not be entitled to an appeal.
Previously, they would. Previously, the deadline of October 31st to file an appeal by a student accompanied by a $30 fee could happen any student. If the student is like, you know what, I want to have my exam looked at, they could file the form, say, I want them to rescore my exam, and the college board would do it.
But for this year, they knock those out?
Correct. Because the appeal was through the multiple choice side. They would rescore the multiple choice portion. Since there was no multiple choice, they did away with that.
Was there a fee for the retaking if you had technological issues?
No, no.
No, they waived all of the fees.
Right.
Those were kind to them.
So just a quick overview of how the, how the students performed this year.
So for the 2020 academic year, we had 267 students take exams for a total of 508 exams. Thirty of our, thirty of the exams scored a one. 130 scored a two. 176 scored a three. 119 scored a four, and 53 scored a five. And if you look at the bottom row, it'll tell you the number of students for each score. So for number, for a one, there were 28 students total who scored a one. 105 for a two. 103 for a three. 95 scored a four, and 46 scored a five.
And obviously, the number of students is less than the total number of exams because there are quite a few students who took multiple AP exams. I received a question about highlighting some of the accomplishments of our kids this year. So we had 43 students who scored as AP scholars this year, which means that they, they got at least they got at least a, a three or higher on at least three exams. They took three exams and they got at least a three on three. So, we had 20, uh, we had 43 students who achieved that. We had 25 students who were scholars with honors, which means that they had an overall average of 3.25, and they got a three or higher on at least four exams. And we had 17 students who are scholars with distinction, which means that they averaged a 3.5 or better on their AP exams, and they got a three or higher on at least five exams.
I have a question.
Yes.
Two questions. So, I see the exam data over five years, but that doesn't really tell me the whole picture. So, if I'm looking at the 2020 exam data-
Right.
Where we break down the ones through fives, I, I, is that indicative or aligned with what's happened historically? Or was this year being in the remote environment?
Right. So, so, we, we haven't fully drilled down to that, and part of the reason is, the only exams that we are able to look at that are based upon the, the number of students who took specific exams. And the challenge is, because we don't require all kids to take the AP exam at the end of the AP course, it's not 100% reliable for us to be able to identify cohort to cohort if the performance is consistent, because it's not standardized. Does that make sense, the way that I'm saying it? So, you know, this year, you may have a, a, a calculus B.C. class with 25 kids in it, and 20 kids take the AP exam. Next year, it may only be, you know, five kids. So, it's, it's difficult to be able to compare, you know, it's not the same as the presentation that we do for the Regents' exam, where all kids are required to be able to take that.
And, and those students that were recognized as AP scholars and their various designations, how are they acknowledged in Monroe Woodbury?
That's a really good question.
It's a great question.
We're working on it.
In the past, we really have not acknowledged that.
Right.
But we will find a way, as always, to-
But we should start.
Especially this year, when it was under such, you know, extenuating circumstances. I think that a student that received a five and/or any of these AP scholar designations really-
Pretty spectacular.
Deserves a recognition.
100%. Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, is there any talk about what's going to be happening for this year, or they're holding off on making any sort of determination?
Not a word. I, I mean, this, I, I will tell you that this unfolded very rapidly, you know, we, we went out in March. This process unfolded very, very rapidly between March and May. Obviously, in March, this was not the intention or the direction of the AP exam, so, um, you know, we haven't heard a peep in terms of what they're planning on doing.
Now, knowing this is a possibility for this year, uh, is there any thought to changing how teachers prepare the students for the AP exam, since it's no longer the multiple choice section, uh, which would be recall? Uh, it's now more of essay writing?
Well, one of the, one of the things that we have to wait and hear is that they also made some modifications in terms of the curriculum that they were going to expect on the AP exams. The reason why they changed it to just the essays rather than the multiple choice is because they came out and they said that the students, the students' assessments on the exams were going to be through the extent of where the teachers should have covered through the May, or through the, the March timeframe, because that's when schools typically shut down. So, I think that, that's sort of an annual decision that they made. Last year, that was brand new, because when schools shut down, they knew that the, the remote learning methods of schools vary greatly across the state, and they couldn't hold kids accountable for curriculum beyond that if schools were not fully in person the way that they were.
Right, but, uh, an exam like this benefits a student who's a, a superior writer-
Writer, right.
Versus a student who might not be as good at writing, but has a very good memory for-
Correct.
The subject matter.
Yep. And now, and now the teachers know. I mean, you know, now, now the teachers know that in the event that this is something that they duplicate, what the skills are that they need to practice in the classroom in order to be able to equip the skills, the, the kids with, the skills to do-
To that extent, is there anything, you know, accountability on the end of the, the teacher that, you know, like, what do their numbers look like? Do we have a breakdown by teacher as to what their AP scores are for their students?
I, I mean, we, we have it by course, but again, because it's not, it's not the same as, if you're taking a, if you're a Regents' teacher, and you're required to prepare kids specifically for that, that exam, and we can look at your Regents' results historically, because every single student in your class, it, it varies in AP, because not every student is required to take that exam. So, it, it's hard to be able to draw definitive conclusions if you're not, you know-
Right, but the students that are taking the exam, we can see if they all got ones in that class, or twos, or-
Agreed. Yep.
I have one last question from Mr. Casti. I've had a couple of, uh, high school students ask, I know it's a little off topic, when schedules are coming out?
They answered.
Specifically, the ones, when?
So-
Next week, day 28.
We, we are planning to have them out by the 28th.
Yeah.
Maybe at 11:59.
I was, I was gonna say, what's the deadline? Five o'clock? It's gonna be 4:58.
Maybe by 11:59 P.M. on the 28th.
11:59 P.M. Is this open session for Mr. Casti?
Oh.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's a lot.
I also just want to make a note that, um, Don Beeler had been joining us remotely, but he had left the meeting at about 8:15, correct? Okay, so he is no longer joining us remotely. Moving on to the presentation of the 2019-2020 High School and Middle School Yearbooks. Um, presentation for the high school yearbook by Mr. Casti. Sorry, where did he go?
He's coming around.
He's coming around.
Is that a library? Is that up there?
No, we have it here.
Yes, we have. I'm sorry, I don't have mine. Do you want to hold yours up, Elsie?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. We actually, I know under normal circumstances, we always love this moment, because, um, the high school yearbook staff and everybody come and actually present the book to us. Obviously, this year, things being a little bit different, but we do want to acknowledge all of them. Thank you so much. Um, the book is phenomenal and gorgeous, and, uh, so, thank you, Mr. Casti.
You're welcome. And, you know, the, uh, yearbook staff asked me just to thank you for your support for the yearbook and all that they are doing. Uh, it was very difficult in these times completing a yearbook, and they already are, uh, planning on what we're going to do if the school year ends up the same way it did this past year. Uh, one thing, though, that does occur with all that was going on, that there were some mistakes that were made, and, and the, um, yearbook staff has apologized for all those and have amended as many as they can. I just wanted to just bring one to light, that we, Emily Williams is in the top 25. We, there was a miscommunication on our part, uh, internally, that had the wrong picture put in there, and we have rectified that, and with her book, as well as all the remaining books we had, by requesting a sticker from, um, Hirth Jones, which we then placed in all the yearbooks, uh, going forward. But she well deserves that picture in there, and I just wanted to mention that here at the board meeting, that, uh, we do apologize for that, uh, error. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the presentation of the 2019-2020 Middle School Yearbook by the Middle School Principal, Mr. Masano.
Good evening, everybody. I just, I, I do have a statement prepared by the yearbook advisors that I want to read, um, on their behalf, but I wanted to make a quick note. If you look through, I mean, the, uh, theme of the yearbook is finding our way, and I don't think that could have been more relevant to the year that we experienced. Um, if you start off on page two, I believe you've got pictures of all the smiling, mask-free faces there on the first day of school during Tech-Mageddon. And then, uh, we quickly go to, by page 15, you're looking at the, uh, remote learning situations from around our building. So, it really reflects the evolution of the year and the challenges that we faced, and I think they just did a terrific job in capturing that throughout the yearbook. So, I'm very proud of the advisors and the students involved in creating that. Uh, a lot of credit is owed to Mrs. Kiernan and Mrs. Roman, who are probably home watching this. They weren't able to be here tonight, and I wanted to read this, uh, statement that they've written on their behalf. The 2020 yearbook is one that we will never forget. This year's theme is finding our way. The artist we worked with created a map of the district for the cover of the yearbook. We have had a great group of students this year who, uh, were part of the yearbook club. They took pictures from the school day, they stayed after for sports and clubs, and went to special events put on by the school and PTA. We also had many teachers and staff submit pictures. We are grateful for everyone who helped us this year in making the yearbook and making sure that it was completed on time. Unfortunately, due to the circumstances, we were unable to include spring sports this year. In its place, we were able to include pictures of students, teachers, and staff working remotely from home. We were happy to see everyone working so hard and still having fun. Although we were still, we were faced with a difficult situation this year, we were able to complete the 136-page yearbook with pictures that captured the indelible memories of this past school year. Thank you for everyone who helped us along the way, including your supportive, our supportive administrators, innovative and creative students, and amazing and helpful staff and faculty we get to work with. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the books. And thank you, I know a lot of you had reached out to me and said that you would like to donate your copies. I really appreciate that. They will go, um, to very, very happy students, and, uh, if you'd like to do that, just let me know, and we'll take care of collection. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, moving on to the approval of minutes, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, committee reports, reports by Board of Education members. Um, who wants to start? Chris, Policy?
Uh, the Policy Committee will be meeting Monday. Uh, we're going to be, uh, discussing some remote learning, uh, acceptable practices, whether it be, uh, the platforms that they'll be using in the school. Uh, also, we're going to be looking at the rules and etiquette and procedures while you're on the computer, uh, to solidify that everybody is at home, obliging by some etiquette and rules, um, whether it's the teacher or the student. And also, the, um, attendance component will be part of that, I believe also, so, we have some work to do before the school starts. Hopefully, this will be done, uh, right away, and, uh, it'll be implemented, and you'll be able to roll it out like, uh, the first two weeks of school, so everyone's aware. So, we're going to get on that Monday.
Thank you. Dawn, visitation?
Uh, this past week, we visited Central Valley, and we, uh, completed our, uh, visitation rounds of the district buildings, uh, as well as the buildings and grounds. While we were at Central Valley, as part of the visitation, we also, you know, had a chance to look at some of the classrooms, like, um, Ms. McClary was talking about before, with respect to the social distancing and the placement of the desks, and, um, you know, again, it's, it's all changing as they work through the numbers, but the hope is that, uh, before school starts, the Visitation Committee will make a full round of the district buildings and classrooms to, uh, look at all the signage and the, and the placement of the desks, lunchrooms, and, and all the other areas that were-
I think the, the last school we have to do is Sapphire, correct?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
You have Sapphire left to visit, and, um, we, we apologize to Miss Caldwell. We got tied up in our, our visitation at Central Valley. Sapphire will be our last, uh, stop. I think next week, we're looking to do that.
Thank you.
And Orange County School Board has not met. Our first meeting is September 2nd, and I'm sure it's going to be a very interesting meeting.
September 2nd, okay. Um, I know Dawn is unfortunately not here. Patrick, do you want to comment on anything with facilities?
Uh, I, well, I think facilities really did not much to report since the last meeting. It was two weeks ago, we haven't had a meeting, um, so there's really, really nothing to report in that area.
Okay.
I was going to mention the Audit Committee, we-
Yes, please, I was, I was going to go to that next.
Okay, go ahead, Stacey. Did you want to-
No, go ahead, you can say-
Um, okay, well, we had a, uh, first Audit Committee meeting of the year, uh, last week on Tuesday, and we always have that prior to the actual external audit, which began this week. So, we have about four auditors with us for the week. Everything's on schedule. Uh, looks like we'll wrap up by midday Friday, probably. And, um, you know, so far, so good. I mean, just, just in terms of the audit in the financial area. Uh, one thing that affected the audit and happened at the end of the last week is New York State came out and, um, decided to hold back 20% of the aid from the, uh, 2019-2020 year, which is, we booked that as a receivable. Every year, there's a portion of our state aid that is owed to us. They held back 20% of that. So, that was something we talked a lot about during the budget process, that, uh, you know, the governor had alluded to a cut up to 20%. So, they have now, uh, withheld a portion of the aid due to us from last year. And we had to actually make an adjustment. Uh, we, we do a state aid receivable, uh, calculation, we had booked that on Friday, or Thursday, Friday, and, and then that occurred. So, we're actually going to have to, um, adjust that receivable downward a little bit, uh, because we don't know if we'll get the 20% or when we'll get it. And, um, if you don't know, and you're not going to get, you know, the, the receipt within, say, 90 days, you usually have to, um, not book it that way as revenue. So, um, it's going well, and, um, you know, we'll have another meeting, a post-audit meeting as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Emily, report by Board of Education representative, student representative?
So, tonight, I'll be sharing a short summary of a project I'm going to be working on as the new student rep. Um, I've been a student in the Monroe Woodbury School District since kindergarten, and if there's one thing that stood out to me over the years, it's how amazing the education system is. I've had tremendous support from teachers and educators, who have all put in their best efforts to pave the way for successful life after high school. However, despite an outstanding GPA and a multitude of extracurriculars, there's one component in a student's college application that can either make or break all of their hard work, the SATs. Upon observation, I've realized that the majority of kids in our school don't prioritize the SAT, whether it be from personal choice, or the bigger issue, financial insecurity. One of my main initiatives as the new student representative is to increase resources for those who lack financial support, or who simply don't have enough access or knowledge about these resources. I want to ensure that everyone receives equal opportunities, no matter where they come from. The first step in my project is to organize the SAT review preparation class slash program in our high school. This idea, this idea came to me when I realized that an overwhelming number of students in our school are already put at a disadvantage in the college admission process, when they lack the ability to access heavily funded test preparation programs in comparison to those from elitist or private college prep high schools. I'm still in the process of crafting the specifics of my plan. Details such as if the class would only be allowed for those who lack financial support, whether the program will be held in the form of tutors or a class, if we will branch out to the ACTs as well, or how many sessions will be hosted, will be established, once I get more input from staff members and students. I have been studying for the SATs for about a year, and I've had more than enough resources to guide me. Therefore, I hope to group together a similar group of kids with these experiences to help. Additionally, I was in school last week with the lead mentoring club, and I briefly talked to Mrs. Sherman, our lead advisor and high school librarian, about hosting a book drive for used and old review books, which are decently expensive and might further aid those who lack these resources. As the school year transitions to the new hybrid and online format, I think students need more help than ever to ensure that their school year is as comfortable as possible. I am very grateful that I've had the privilege to never feel deprived of resources or supplies. To this end, it is that privilege and experience that I feel now guides me to help my fellow students to ensure that their academic potential can reach its fullest. Thank you.
Great job. Thanks very much, Emily. We look forward to the progress throughout the year. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to just say something. Thank you, because I don't think enough people know what they're entitled to, especially if there's some-
I can't hear her.
Students that are free-
Lorraine, talk into your microphone.
I'm sorry. Free or reduced, they, their SATs are waived, as well as, uh, college applications are waived. are waived. Many of the students are not aware of that.
Yeah, not a lot. So, I'm trying to make sure that enough students are aware of the opportunities that are just right in front of them because I feel like not enough know about it.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to personnel. Matt?
All right. Good evening. Before I ask for approval for the items listed under Personnel, I just want to point out two things. First of all, we're really excited to welcome a number of new staff members to the Monroe-Woodbury community. And one other thing is you'll see that fall coaches are on the agenda for approval tonight. And as of now, the training for the fall season is still tentatively slated to begin on September 21st. However, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association has petitioned the governor for a start date this month. And the governor stated today that he'll be offering guidance about high school sports as early as next week. So, as a result, we wanted to appoint the fall coaches now in the event that we're able to get out onto the playing fields and start training sessions. So, what happens is typically, coaches train with their athletes all year long, but, so we wanted to get them on the agenda tonight, just in the event that was going to happen. But I did want to point out, I know a number of you have asked me or called me. Coaches get paid, they don't get paid for the off-season workouts. They get paid for the time within the actual season, so.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'd like to, sorry, request approval for the items listed under Personnel.
Stacy?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to separate out item 13.1C to be voted on separately from the rest of the personnel.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve all the personnel items except for item 13.1C?
Motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, I would like to take a roll call as to each board member's vote on the item 13.1C. Please call your name and state yea or nay. Anthony?
Yea.
Chris?
Yea.
Dawn?
Yea.
Dan?
Nay.
Michael?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yea.
Lorraine?
I don't see that on here. What is...
13.1C.
13.1C. Why am I not...
Under department chairpersons?
Either I'm going crazy.
Under Personnel, section 13?
Yeah. I see 13.1, 13.2.
It's in 13.1.
If you click on 13.1, it comes up.
I can do it.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Under here. All right. I'll abstain.
Okay. And I, my vote is yea.
Excuse me. Did I hear Lorraine right? She abstained?
She abstained, Lorraine. All those in favor?
Aye.
That was the vote.
That was the vote.
Motion passed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Section 14.2 for the bids for business and financial. Patrick?
Yeah, so...
Excuse me. 14.1 first, the contracts and then the bids.
Right. So, I would respectfully ask for the approval of the items under the Business Financial section. So, it includes, and I'll do this quickly, four contracts for special ed-related services, award of contracts for bids associated with the school lunch fund, approval of meal prices for students with no increase for next year, and then finally a resolution to approve the tax rates. And I would call this a reapproval. There was a, a very small error in the taxable assessed value with what you did on Monday morning. And it turned out that there was a parcel from the town of Woodbury that was coded as being in the Cornwall School, Central School District. And Cornwall noticed that. We did not. We would have no way to notice that, but they noticed that there was this single parcel that was not part of the towns which make up their school district. They notified the county. We corrected the tax rolls and it results in a very small decrease in tax rates. It's the third decimal place. But I thought it made sense to actually approve the final tax rates, you know, for the, for the school district tonight. We've proceeded with the county to process the roll in bills, so that won't make those late. That was one of the reasons that we did it on Monday. So, that's what that is.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Last is reports by Board and Central Office. Before I start going around with everybody, you know, unfortunately, I'm going to make an announcement this evening that Christopher DiLorenzo has put in his letter of resignation from service to the Board of Education effective September 1st. And I'm going to give it to Chris first to speak, please.
Well, I'd just like to say that I'd like to commend Elsie and the Cabinet and thank you on your presentations today. I know that this time is not easy for you guys. It would be nice if we had a blanketed procedure to go through for all this school openings and whatnot, but the public needs to know that every district is different and we are a very large district. So, it does take a lot of work and change. So, I want to thank you for all your work in the last couple of weeks that you've done. As you said, it's September 1st. I will be resigning from the Board of Ed. I'll be moving officially out of the district. I would like to thank the community for believing in me in the last five and a half years with assisting in the decision-making that has impacted this district. For my fellow board members, it's been a pleasure to work with making this board. We all have different personalities and views and I appreciate that we had good conversations and we had other opinions in, that we used, both that were good and bad, but we all worked together to make a lot of plans and they all worked at the task that was at hand. If we started on opposite sides, we listened and we did come together as a group always. So, I appreciate that. I'm proud of the district and I'm glad I'll be able to say I've been a part of it. I would like to commend Elsie and her cabinet. For me personally, feels that they go above and beyond my initial expectations of how the Board of Ed works from day to day. They really are amazing individuals. Every day, seven days a week, not just five business days. I'm sure Elsie won't miss me calling impulsively, venting, flipping out about social media trolls that have nothing better to do but start trouble with the parents in the district, or me not being politically correct and saying exactly what I was thinking during discussions. And maybe you'll miss that. Again, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the community and I will miss everyone. I want to wish all the students, faculty, cabinet, board, and Elsie lots of luck with our new school year. And we all should just work day to day. I've said it before, we should just keep moving forward. So, that's all.
Thank you. Donna?
I just wanted to say congratulations, well, we're going to miss you, Chris.
Thank you.
Good luck with your new adventures, I guess. I wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Vias on his accomplishments and also wish Suzanne a happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it. Good night.
Thank you. Anthony?
Best of luck, Chris, in all your future endeavors. I remember five and a half years ago, we were together when we, you, me, and Mike came on board. I remember having a conversation with you when we were putting our applications in and you were sort of like, "Well, I don't know if I'm going to like this and I don't know if I'm going to talk too much and if this is really for me." And here we are, five and a half years later, and you've been really one of the best board members I've ever seen. And your passion for it and all the things that you do to help the community and help the kids is really, really appreciated and we're really going to miss you. It's been my pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
And to the Elsie and the cabinet and all the teachers and administration, I'm just really thankful for all the work you do and for the task force to put in all the work to give the community a hybrid option where the kids could actually go to school. A lot of communities across our country are not really offering that. They're just taking an easier way out. And I understand why, but they're saying, "We're just going to offer remote for the first couple of months and see how it is." So, I really do appreciate and I think everyone in the community does all the hard work that it's taking to make a hybrid opportunity or a model that you're offering to the community. So, thank you for all the work you've done and thank you. And congratulations to Dr. Vias on your accomplishment and thanks to everyone for all their presentations tonight.
Thank you. Dawn?
Well, I feel everything that Anthony said about Chris and then some. He's been definitely a mentor to me and a tremendous asset to this district and I'm going to miss him tremendously. So, good luck on your new home and thank you for all that you did for us. To speak a little bit about what you said about the Elsie and the cabinet and the administrators working 24/7, I can definitely attest to that. I mean, I am the board member that texts them and emails them and calls them at all hours and days and they're readily available to answer every question that I have. And I see how much they're putting into this entire reopening plan and really have been nonstop since, since March. So, I do want to recognize them for that. And I want to talk a little bit about the SEL program that Mrs. Rodriguez and Stacy talked about. I just want to share my appreciation as a board member to Christine Ricker for all of her support with coordinating everything about that. There's been a lot of work that was done on her behalf and she's worked really tirelessly to bring this program to our district and I'm very grateful to her. Thank you for the yearbooks. I especially liked the middle school, that they included the remote learning pictures. I thought that was awesome. Thank you to Mrs. Arroyo and Dr. Hassler and Mr. Cassidy for the AP presentation. I personally asked for that. I thought it was important to recognize the students for the AP work that they take on, especially during this time. Congratulations to Dr. Vias. He's in good company with Dr. Hassler. Emily, thank you for your piece that you spoke about. I'm highly connected to what you speak about and I look forward to your work on that as well. And I'd like to welcome the new staff to Monroe-Woodbury. You're in a great place. And that's it. Have a good night.
Thank you. Dan?
I got to attend the summer school, high school graduation. Extremely nice, very different than our usual summer school graduation, but congratulations to those handful of students who stuck with it to make it through the summer. And I really want to say, Chris, we're going to miss you. You know, you made the meetings a lot more fun, a lot more exciting. And, you know, it was, it was, it made it good to hang out with you. And you were, we could talk about cars. Nobody else knows. But I wish you good luck and you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
I'd like to start by saying I know what a huge undertaking scheduling is because that's what I do. And I have a deep appreciation for the work that was put into forming the schedule for this coming fall. So, to everyone who took part in that, really, thank you. You did a great job. I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Vias on your accomplishments. And Chris, it's been a pleasure working with you, not only on the board, but in the Policy Committee, and you will definitely be missed. And I wish you and your family the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Michael?
I just want to take a moment to thank Chris for his years of service to the district. It's very much appreciated. Volunteer jobs usually are thankless jobs, but you really made a difference in the district, so we really appreciate that and hope you have a great time on your new adventure. I also want to take a minute to thank the Elsie and the cabinet. I think there's a ton of work, you know. I run a business where we have a lot of work to do in this environment as well. And I couldn't imagine that this could be pulled off without a really strong team. So, you can see the amount of work that has gone in, the amount of thought and care and process. So, I really appreciate that as a parent in the district as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine?
I guess I'd like to thank Elsie and the cabinet. This is a work in progress and I can't even really imagine. I mean, we're up here and we ask all these questions, but I'm sure this is a lot of pressure and a lot of stress. So, my hat is off to you and you have my support, even though I may seem to be a pain. Congratulations to Bargav. Thank you for all the presentations. Suzanne, happy birthday.
Thank you.
I didn't know it was your birthday. And I want to just say to Chris, you know, good luck to you in all your endeavors. I really enjoyed working with you. There were times across, even in public, you know, I wanted, I was probably eyeballing you and probably annoyed at some things, but I totally appreciate everything that you've done here and I really enjoyed being on the Policy Committee. I'm going to miss our heated debates. We had plenty of those, but, you know, when it all comes down to it, it was always for the interest of the students. And so, I appreciate it and I enjoyed definitely working with you. Good night.
Thank you. Emily?
I just want to give a really big thank you on behalf of the entire student body. I know that this is a tough time, but I hope you know that we're extremely grateful for even getting to come back to school. And we're going to adapt to anything. We're, I know that it's really tough and I just want to say that we recognize your efforts and we really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
So, Chris, best of luck to you and your family in the future. It's been, it's been great working with you. You've been a good and valuable board member and a valuable member of the Facilities Committee. I know you put in a lot of work and we're an important piece, a part of that committee, getting the field work done. And we're going to miss you and I will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bargav. Dr. Vias?
Chris, pleasure working with you. Thank you for all your support and guidance to all of us. We'll certainly miss you and good luck to your next adventure. Tomorrow will be the last day for our device distribution for the summer. As of this afternoon, we have distributed about 5,800 devices. So, it was a daunting task. We will be doing the distribution again on September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. More information to come on the website. But I do want to thank all the administrators, security officers, translators, buildings and grants folks, summer support team, and the MCC team because distributing close to 6,000 devices is a daunting task in socially a distance environment and do efficiently. It's a whole different level. So, I really thank all the team support that we received throughout the process. This week also, we started working with our tech coaches and E&amp;L teachers, what we call as the Families in Technology and Training. We had few sessions to provide the technology support and going the overview of the different solutions that our teachers will be using, but helping our students and parents. There are some sessions still available this week and next week, so I encourage all the parents to take the advantage of this training. And some of the sessions are very small, so it becomes almost like a personal training. And they are after-hours available, so take the advantage of that. Couple of other things. Summer graduation was phenomenal and Mr. Peterson did a good job with the end of the school year as well.
Thank you. Matt?
I'm going to echo what everybody else says. Thank you to everybody who presented tonight. Chris, you'll be missed. You're, you know, I had a chance to tell you the other day, we, a bunch of us have been here for a lot of years and seen a lot of different board members come, kind of come and go. You're one of the good ones. And not just because you know what you're doing as a board member, just because you're one of the good ones. So, thank you. Bargav, I'm proud of you. I'm really, really proud of you. And I know it was not easy and I'm just really happy for you. Congratulations. And lastly, obviously, we're excited to welcome our kids back. But any staff, we've had a lot of different questions in our office from staff members about what this year will look like, for them in particular. Please, please, please make sure you reach out to me and my office if you have any particular questions so we can help with the start of the year. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Dr. Hassler?
I echo what everybody else has already said. Thank you to Chris. Also, I think it's also congratulations. Congratulations on, you know, you're, you're going to have a little bit more time available to yourself, so that's, that's a good thing.
I need more time.
Right. Big congratulations to Bargav. Not only is it a massive accomplishment to do it this year, of all years of starting the school year the way that it did and now ending the school year and still defending your dissertation. Congratulations. Very, very impressive. Emily, super excited about the work that you're doing. I mean, that is fantastic to hear that work because I think it's going to benefit a lot of kids in the district. Thank you to the dozens and dozens of staff who have assisted in the planning for our reopening. I mean, just my little slice of this, I know that I've, you know, worked closely with dozens and dozens of people. And thank you so much to everybody's input and assisting with this. I mean, if you looked at from even August 5th, what we presented to now, you see the evolution of things and that's the result of a lot of hard work of many people. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy and Mrs. Arroyo for putting together the information for the AP presentation. Thank you to Mr. McElroy and Ms. Edwards Allen for, not only for summer school graduation, but remember, that was a remote-only plan. And that came on the heels of school being completely shut down. And not only was it, you know, the handful of kids who were able to graduate, by us maintaining that program, it also assisted dozens of kids in maintaining momentum in their own progress, even though they weren't necessarily ready to graduate yet, but still maintaining that momentum in their progress through high school. So, thank you very much for that work. Thank you also to Mr. Peterson who, again, similarly, that, you know, we offer our Summer Crusaders program every single school year and this year, we had to offer it remotely. But thank you so much to Mr. Peterson and his staff for also, you know, putting together a great program to support our kids and the end-of-the-year celebration was fantastic. Thanks.
Thank you. Elsie?
So, I want to say happy birthday to Suzanne, but we also have a happy birthday to Caitlin Caldwell. Happy birthday, Caitlin.
I think we're going to sing though, right?
We are?
We're going to sing to her at the end.
Well, we're going to sing to you at the end. So, just wait. I know this is exactly how you wanted to spend your birthday. Both you and Suzanne wanted to be at this point. I appreciate everyone thanking us for this presentation, but I would be remiss if I didn't say this is, this is a collaboration of the entire district. I keep saying this, in our mind, this is like a puzzle. So, I am so grateful to the teachers, the administrators, the board members, cabinet members, our custodians, everybody who is working nonstop to make this happen. And I, the most important thing is what Emily said, which is the students are so appreciate, appreciative of coming back to school. This is why we do it. We do it for you. So, that's important. Chris?
Don't be looking at me.
Thank God I have a mask. That is, you're amazing. And I will miss you. I just want to say one thing about Chris. Everything he did, he did for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so I can get through that piece before I address everything else, I just, I've been fortunate for the last over 15 years to call Chris a friend. And I'll still continue to do so. That part of our relationship won't end. But I think what's important for the community of Monroe-Woodbury to realize is that in the span of his six years of service, the... amount that he's accomplished as a Board member really just goes to his true character, then, and Elsie is 100% right, that everything he's done, even behind the scenes with the bantering and, and the heated debates that we've had, and probably driving Lori Hock crazy on the Facilities Committee, has all been for the benefit of our kids. And that is something that's a true passion that we will be at a loss for, because if he does something, he does it to 110%, and whether that's a fault, I'm not sure, but I know that we're appreciative as a district to have had him for this time. So thank you, Chris, and as far as the rest of it, I don't have to worry because I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow, so. I want to say thank you to all the custodians and the administrators and everybody who's still been working behind the scenes, even for the teachers and the faculty who are home planning what this new school year will look like. It has not been a summer vacation, I don't think, for anybody, and I think that's important to recognize, because even in our short trip last week for visitation, there's a lot going on every day in our buildings and on the weekends, and to say that about not only the cabinet that's sitting up here, but everybody who's still here in the audience and who's watching us live, it, it doesn't go unnoticed, and I think, I think we're appreciative of that. And I agree 100% that I'm appreciative of the efforts because we're doing it for children like Emily and students that we have. We want to be able to give everybody the best possible year that we can, given the circumstances that we're under, so I'm appreciative to everyone who's done that. A special thank you goes out to those who have been very proactive in kind of getting us to the point that we're in, as far as being able to go one-to-one with devices, ordering PPE equipment, the infrastructure that we've had in the district. We're in a very good place right now that we are at least ready to get ready to open. Minor, minor details and things might have to be worked out, but a lot of the things that some other school districts may be facing as a struggle, we're actually ahead of the game, so I appreciate the fact that there was some behind-the-scenes foresight with that, so that's been great. I want to wish Suzanne and Caitlin Caldwell a happy birthday. I do sincerely apologize, as this is now my third meeting. My first meeting was a record in time, I will note that, but my last two have not been, and I apologize, but I do feel that it is important that with all of the reopening plans, and then, of course, we have other business that we're still conducting as far as some of the presentations, which we're appreciative. I think it's important to us that even though we are under the stress of the reopening plan, there is still other factors that go into running the school district, and we're appreciative to the time for the AP presentation and the department chair presentation, so thank you to that, we appreciate that. Congratulations, Dr. Vias. Wish you all the best. It's great news for us. I too want to reiterate about the graduation for summer school. It was excellent. Congratulations to those students and to the faculty and staff that put that together. It was a great experience. And for the ESY, we got to go, I don't know if it was called a trunketry or what it was called, but it was phenomenal, and I want to say thank you so much to all the teachers who took the time and, and decorated all of their trunks.